So I'll call the Concord School Committee back to session and I'll entertain a motion to enter the public hearing.
I move to open the public hearing on the Concord Public Schools budget for fiscal 23.
Just a question, do I have to roll call us back into regular session?
I don't believe so.
I didn't think so, but, okay, and I'll do a roll call on the public hearing.
Anderson, I.
I'm fine.
Marano, I.
And Rainy, I. And I believe we're going to hand it off to Mr. Stanton for the hearing presentation. Great. Laura, do you want to start us off and then I can screen through?
Yeah, why don't you load the slides while, while I'm introducing here. So we are reviewing the superintendent's recommended budget that was initially presented a few weeks ago to the Concord School Committee. This is the public hearing and meant to be an opportunity for the public to comment and weigh in, which can happen after the presentation. The school committee is in session, but this portion of the meeting really is about the public and making sure we're meeting all our obligations to open up the information and, and receive any feedback or comments. So the presentation itself is almost identical to the one the committee saw a few weeks ago. Jared made that one recommended adjustment of including the DEI director in the budget rather than the Metco grant. So you'll see a reallocations of positions to make that happen, both in the Metco grant and in the budget. And otherwise, we're bringing you the same content and the same requests and we can talk on those as we go.
Great.
Yeah, all yours, Jared.
All right. Good evening. So the FY 23 budget timeline, so today, January 11th, is the public hearing. Couple important dates for you all to, to know is Warren Articles are due and conquered on February 2nd. March 10th, we're going to be presenting pretty much the same presentation to the finance committee. Budget books at this time will be due in April and Concord Town Meeting is May 1st. The recommended budget for FY 23 is $43,323,170, which is 3.87% more than the FY 22 approved budget. And $486,848 above the finance committee's guideline. The 1,000 function includes all of our salaries and expenditures for administration, IT, HR, and other central office-based staff. The 2,000 function includes salaries for teachers, assistants and tutors, the principals and assistant principals, our substitute costs, curriculum costs, school supplies and materials, special education contract services and equipment. Teacher salaries and longevity account for $1,326,853 of the $1,895,000 you're seeing there in the 2,000 function. The 3,000 function includes our transportation expenses, nurses, athletics and student activities. The largest cost driver here is due to a special education transportation cost, which are going up 125,000. The 4,000 function includes all of our maintenance costs. Last year, we negotiated with both of our custodial and maintenance units. Fixed charges include teacher retirement incentive and our teacher sick leave buyback costs. These two lines are decreasing a combined $142,780. The community service function is all of our private school transportation salaries. 3.67 of our FTE or driver FTEs are dedicated to these ones. Fixed assets, fixed assets include all of our bus leases. We budgeted for two new leases in FY 23 as part of our tenure replacement plan. And lastly, special education tuition lines are going down a total of $528,459 from FY 22's budget. Tuitions are down 366,000 and our offsets are going up due to increases in circuit breaker and IDEA. We've identified $1,141,174 in budget drivers made up of eight different expense types. For something to be considered a budget driver, the expense type category must increase by 50,000 or more. A cost savings is the same thing, except a decrease of 50,000 or more in that expense category. This year, there were about 36 expense categories at CPS and 12 of them are salary categories. The first is our largest budget driver, which is typical, and that is our teacher salaries. Next, the special, special ed teams have done a great job creating programs to keep children in district. As these programs have grown, we've needed additional staff. Most of the additional FTEs are for programs at Thoreau. Support staff lines are increasing due to salary increases. And we also restored an HR admin assistant that was reduced before the pandemic. This is split with the high school. Custodial maintenance, those are the contractual increases. Principals and assistant principals, we identified as a budget driver mainly due to cola increases in FY 22 that were a bit higher than I budgeted. In addition, we budgeted some funds for an assistant principal's mentor in anticipation of an impending retirement. Contract services are up 4.32%, mostly due to some increases in special education contract services needed to keep children in districts. And lastly, guidance have increased due to special education summer training for research and development, DEI building leads, and an increase to teacher mentoring. Cost savings to offset the budget drivers who've identified $781,482 in cost savings. As you can see here is the breakdown of the special education tuition savings, sick leave in early retirement, and then the curriculum instruction savings. The FY 23 recommended budget includes 419.6 FTEs, which is 11.35 FTEs more than the FY 22 budgeted. We budgeted approximately $35,625,489 on staffing in the general fund. The only FTE is not included in this total is our calf workers who are paid out of food service revolving account, which is self-funded. And we have about 8.5 FTEs charged the food service revolving account. We budgeted approximately $445,000 of our total CPS MECO allocation towards salaries. The DEI director is now in the general fund and we moved guidance salaries in the MECO fund instead. Other expenses in our MECO grant include small supplies and material allocations, contract services, and then the rest is for transportation, supplies and materials, fuel and insurance. We use our Title I monies on tutor salaries and I set aside approximately $139,000 in FY 23. And then lastly, we charge preschool teacher salaries to the preschool revolving account and we estimate receiving about $140,000. Here's our special education tuition broken up. We have 1.2 and not public, just on the 250,000 and collaborative for a total general fund budgeted amount of $1,507,517. And then the tuition offset center breaker and IDEA. We are projecting 14 students out of district in FY 23, which is down five from FY 22 and 12 from FY 21 and a lot more from before. Here is the chart of our estimated savings due to early retirement incentives. As you know, when someone retires, to get this incentive, they have to be at the top of their lane because they have to have that number of years of experience and then we bring in their replacement at 75,000 or less. And as you can see, these numbers speak for themselves. CPS has 22 buses, two of which are wheelchair buses. The oldest of the fleet are from 2008. Currently, we are getting two buses. We budgeted for two bus leases and two leases are actually falling off. We currently have two electric buses. The newest one, which was delivered in November, is still going through inspection and still not on the road. I can't wait to bring you that when it is. We have 26.73 transportation driver FTEs I conquered. 19.3 for the, for in district runs. 3.68 designated for MECO and 3.68 are private school routes. Overall, the preschool location is going down 0.55% from FY 22 budgeted. We have a total of 15.87 FTEs in our preschool program. 6.8 of these FTEs are teachers. While the tutor line here is increasing 11.14%, we've had some changes in personnel from who was budgeted versus who filled the positions from last year. In addition, the cost of living increase was a bit more than budgeted. The contracted services are special education related and are being moved to the district-wide location. This is actually going to be a theme throughout the presentation in the other elementary and middle school areas. Lastly, the curriculum instruction line is now consolidated in the district-wide location as well. Overall, the elementary budget location is going up 9.56% from FY 22 budgeted. We have a total of 15.2 FTEs in the district-wide elementary location. This is an increase of one, which is for a new curriculum academic coordinator that is being requested. Savings for this is coming from curriculum PD lines, which you will see when we get to the district-wide location. In addition, we have budgeted for a retirement at 75K, but the replacement for this position was filled by an existing employee who was higher in the salary scale. There was a salary savings, but it was realized in the school location where the employee used to work. Lastly, the nursing line includes additional days for nurses and a stipend for the lead nurse. The Alcott location is going up 3.45% more than the FY 22 budget. We have a total of 69.95 FTEs budgeted, which is an increase of 1.81. Contract services are being moved to district-wide. The curriculum instruction accounts are going down 47.27%, primarily due to savings in software. Professional development is increasing 13,000 for the, is going up 13,000. Issues are going up 1.0 for the need for a new special education branch teacher. Supplies and materials are increasing due to supplies needed for everyday math and supplies needed for the, for the language arts line. And lastly, we are projecting a 5% increase in utilities. The Thoreau location is going up 6.95% from the FY 22 budgeted. The request for FY 23 is 85.84 FTEs, which is nine more than we budgeted for FY 22. Due to current special education needs and programs, our assistance and tutor lines are going up seven FTEs. These were addition after last year's budget was approved. To help support these programs, we have also added an additional special education teacher. In addition, due to projected kindergarten class sizes, we have a need for another K section. For the same reasons as Alcott, again, contract services and the curriculum instructions are down. Supplies and materials are up 9.8%, mainly due to everyday math. And lastly, we're also projecting a 5% increase to Thoreau's utilities. The Willard, the Willard location is decreasing 0.73. FY 23's request also includes a reduction of 3.86 FTEs from FY 22. Two of the tutor FTEs will be following the students to the middle school, so that will account for two of their increases. Our teachers line is decreasing 0.5 FTE due to reduction of a 1.0 FTE in K due to current numbers. But the speech and language pathologist line increased 0.5. For the same reason as the other two elementary schools, again, contract services and curriculum instruction are down and supplies and materials are up and 5% increase in utilities. The middle school location is going up 4.85% and 2.4 total FTEs in FY 23. Like the elementary schools, the middle school portion of the special education contract services are being moved to district-wide. Curriculum instruction is also decreased due to reductions in math and social studies textbook, textbook lines. The tutor and assistance lines are decreasing a total of one. In salary, salary administration, the director of student services is being moved district-wide for that to wash. The assistant assistants are reducing too. And there is an overall increase of 3.4 in the teachers' lines due to special education needs. This budget includes three additional special education teachers and an additional adjustment counselor. One special education teacher was added after the FY 22 budget was done. And then we are requesting a language-based, based teacher through SFR funds. And lastly, a request for an ASD position. There are some other moving parts in English, world language, social studies and science that make the overall increase 3.4. And lastly, we're also projecting a 5% increase in utilities. Overall, the district-wide location is increasing 3.49% in one total FTE. Contract services are the largest increase in this location. We consolidated all the special ed lines. The interim special ed director zero based all the special ed needs throughout the district and this was the result. Case transportation costs are projected to be up 110,000 based on the formula, which faces the cost on ridership from two years prior. Professional development is up 6.67% overall. Special education PD increased for 81,000, but the curriculum staff development decreased 48,000, which is helping offset the requested academic coordinator. Administration is up 0.4 due to the addition of the DEI director. Our tutors and assistant lines are up 0.5 due to the need for a special ed monitor. The substitute line is up 20,000, but this is because we reduced all the special ed subs in the school locations and brought them to one location. So this is actually not a overall increase. Our teachers category is up 15.34%, but no FTEs. We reduced 0.6 district-wide speech, but we increased the CPS side of the special ed coordinator 0.6 because this person is now in K through eight, but was budgeted K through 12 in FY 22. This is not an overall added position, but an increased cost to CPS and a decreased cost to CCRSD. Also, K5 through, K5 grade level chairs are now district-wide and moved out of the locations. This was an addition of 27,362 in this category in this location. Sick leave and early retirement savings, as you can see. Special education tuition decreases are shown here. And the mentoring, special ed research and development training in the DEI needs account for the increase in stipends. Here is a summary of what has been spent or encumbered to date in the SFR funds and the CARES funds. As part of the American Rescue of 2021, CPS received $995,840 for SFR III. The funds are available through September 30th, 2024. Some of the fund requirements include district plan to safely reopen schools, spending 20% of funds to mitigate lost instructional time, plan as to how to use the remaining 80%. Consultation with stakeholders to determine local priorities. Assurance of how interventions will respond to academic, social, emotional, mental health needs. Consideration of those disproportionately impacted, including low-income families, students of color, English learners and students with disabilities. The deadline for the grant submission was October 4th and does not require a breakdown of the allocation into yearly increments. But after a survey was developed and distributed to staff and families, the following expenditures on this slide became the priority. And that is the CPS presentation. Thank you, Mr. Stanton. Great. If members of the public would like to ask questions or comments, please raise your hand. I'll give you a few minutes or a minute. I do not see any raised hands at this time. I believe we're prepared to close the hearing unless somebody has other business that needs to be conducted. So I'll entertain a motion to close the Concord Public Schools budget hearing for FY 23.
Don't move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
And roll call, please.
Anderson, I.
Booth, I.
Marano, I.
Rainy, I. Thank you very much and the hearing is closed. So let us see here.
All right, we might note at this, this point, Cynthia, that our deliberations on the budget certainly continue for members of the audience. So they, they know that full well. There's multiple opportunities to
Correct.
watch these deliberations continue right through town meeting.
So we're a little shy of seven when we're going to call the region to order. So I'll just wait a moment and let's see if our.
Sarah is here.
Okay.
Hi.
Hi.
All right, we're just waiting to our appointed hour to call the region to order, so.
We can call the region to order now and we can call the region to order now and, and we just have one minute until we can open the hearing. So I'd like to call to order the January 11th Concord Carlisle School Committee meeting. Roll call, please. Anderson, present.
Booth, present.
Marano, present.
Rainy, present.
Wilson, present. And it is seven o'clock now. So I'd like to open the, the budget hearing. So I can set the stage and then Jared will take it from there. We originally presented the superintendent's recommended budget right before the break. The budget, the presentation tonight is the same presentation with a small change in that we've embedded at the school committee's request. The DEI director is now contained within the operating budget and we've reallocated other costs to the Metco grant. So you may see some numbers are a little different than a few weeks ago. Otherwise, our requests are the same. It's an essentially level service budget with some small additions to special education settings so that we have completed our continuum of intensive special needs. So I will turn it over to Jared to talk us through it.
Great, thank you. Tonight is the superintendent's recommended budget public hearing. A couple important dates for you all to, to remember is January 26th. The governor's budget will be out. We will, we will learn about our initial, initial revenue projections. Articles are due on the 28th to both towns. March 10th will be Concord's Finance Committee public hearing. We anticipate right now that budget books will be out in early April. Carlisle's town meeting is April 25th and Concord's town meeting is May 1st. The recommended budget for FY 23 is $36,644,994. This is an overall general fund increase of 2,2.48% over FY 22's budget. The 1,000 function includes all salaries and expenditures for administration, IT, HR, and other central office-based staff. The 2,000 function includes salaries for teachers, assistants and tutors, the principals and assistant principals, our substitute costs, school curriculum costs, school supplies and materials, special education contract services and equipment. Salaries for teachers are the largest budget driver in this function. They represent an increase of $431,206 in the general fund. The 2,000 function does have some cost savings. Our contract services have decreased 111,000 mainly due to special education. Last year was the end of our three-year computer lease that is no longer needed and we are also realizing a savings of 111,000. The 3,000 function includes our transportation expenses, nurses, athletic, student activities. This function is decreasing 5.84% mainly due to a decrease in our case collaborative transportation cost. Driver salaries are increasing a total of $53,687 based on the FY 22 budgeted amount. Drivers' hours can be a bit fluid due to route changes and the need for some added times. The 4,000 function includes all our maintenance costs. We negotiated with, with both the high school custodians union and the maintenance union in FY 21. These charges include banking services, our audit contract, sick leave and retirement incentives, insurance, OPEB and retirement. Overall, the increase is 0.36%, but there are a few drivers and cost savings that offset each other. The insurance projections are up 68,000, which includes a budgeted increase of 90,000 for active employees, but a 37,000 decrease in our retiree medical insurance. Also, the retirement incentive is down $36,924 from the FY 22 budgeted amount. Fixed assets include equipment and our vehicle bus replacements. The region's vehicle replacement line is increasing 53,000 due to two new bus leases in this year's budget. Debt is continuing to decrease. And lastly, special education lines are increasing in FY 23. Debt is continuing to decrease, and lastly, special education lines are increasing in FY twenty-three. We've identified one million, three hundred and ten thousand, eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars in budget trackers made up of eight expense types. For something to be considered a budget driver, the expense type category must increase by fifty thousand or more. A cost savings is the same thing, except a decrease of fifty thousand or more in the expense category. This year, there are forty-three expense categories in the region's budget, and fifteen of them are salary categories. The first is our largest budget driver, and that is the teacher salaries. Special education tuitions increased four hundred and fifty-two thousand, five hundred and seventy-seven dollars. We currently have three more tuitions in FY twenty-three than we had in FY twenty-two. The addition of students coming in from eighth grade versus the students who are aging out also contributed to the increase. The DEI director was added to, was in added position FY twenty-two and is now in the general fund. Support staff lines are increasing due to salary increases, and we also restored an HR admin assistant that was reduced before the pandemic. This is split with CPS. In turn, is an overall budget driver. Salaries for assistants and tutors are increasing six point zero two percent due to an additional tutor FTE in this year's budget. The tutor's contract is expiring at the end of this fiscal year, and we will be negotiating sometime in the coming weeks. Lastly, driver salaries and bus replacements are identified as budget drivers. I've identified five hundred and fifty-four thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars in cost savings made up of four cost categories. Contract and transportation is down two hundred and thirty-seven thousand due to the formula, which is based on ridership from two years prior. Contract services are down one hundred and twenty-one thousand, mostly due to savings in instructional special education contract services. The three-year computer lease is up in FY twenty-two, so we are realizing one hundred and eleven thousand dollars savings there. And again, that is decreasing. The budget has a total of two hundred and twenty-seven point two-five FTEs, which is three point five five more than FY twenty-two's budget. Salaries account for a total of seven, seven hundred and ninety-nine. The salaries account for a total increase of seven hundred and ninety-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-nine dollars in this budget. This includes every employee but our food service staff who are paid out of the food service revolving account. We are paying about four point five FTEs out of the regional food service revolving account. Our largest salary category is the teacher salaries. This category includes salaries and longevity payments. The budget includes an additional one point two five FTE increase in this category. The main increase is the addition of a reading specialist. Half of the salary is being paid in the general fund, and the other half is being paid out of S R three, which is on a later slide. Then there are some small moving parts in other departments due to scheduling that caused the additional point two five FTE increase. And I spoke about the support staff, the E I director, and tutor changes a bit earlier. We charge approximately, we charge approximately four hundred and thirty-one thousand, two hundred and ninety-seven dollars in salaries to our grants and revolving accounts at the region. This excludes our food service grant, which is a hundred percent self-funded. We are expecting four hundred and sixty-two thousand in our Mecca grant in FY twenty-two and twenty-three at this time. Most of the grant is spent on staff salaries, driver salaries, and fuel costs. We then spend a small portion on supplies and materials and professional development. We also push fifty thousand in campus monitor salaries to the parking lot revolving account. FY twenty-three's budget includes three million, forty-six thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars in out-of-district placements. Our circuit breaker projection and IDEA grant offset is projected to come in ninety-one thousand, one hundred and seventy-nine thousand more in FY twenty-three. At this time, we are protecting thirty-six out-of-district students at the region FY twenty-three up from thirty-three in FY twenty-two. Our excess and deficiency balance, we started the year with one million, six hundred and twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars. We received one hundred and sixty thousand, five hundred and seven dollars more in revenue and budgeted in FY twenty-one. We ended the year with a balance in the general fund of five hundred and eighty-seven thousand, eight hundred and sixty-four dollars. We increased E and D contributions from three hundred thousand to six hundred thousand to offset the FY twenty-one budget in June, but that is now the reserve to reduce. Therefore, I'm estimating one million, seven hundred and seventy-five thousand, seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars or four point six nine percent is our E and D level for FY twenty-one, and five percent is the maximum. Sorry for all the background noise, if you can hear that. Kind of love Zoom. Early retirement, here's the chart of our estimated savings due to the early retirement incentive. When someone retires, they're at the top of their lean, and then we bring somebody in usually around seventy-five thousand or less, and here is the savings. The district's OPEB fund balance increased to seven million, five hundred and sixty-nine thousand, two hundred and thirty-two dollars in FY twenty-one. The valuation will be completed by hopefully sometime at the end of this month, if not early next month. The district has level funded OPEB contribution amounts of five hundred and fifty thousand in FY twenty-one and FY twenty-two, and we are recommending the same in FY twenty-three. Actuarialists no longer use the ARC concept. They no longer give a specific amount to fund each year, and they no longer give us a schedule. So at this time, we've funded approximately thirty thousand of our obligations. Once the valuation does come out, we'll have a much better understanding about how they're doing it going forward. They seem to change it every two years. The moving target. In station, the region has twenty-two buses, one of which is a wheelchair bus. The oldest of the fleet are from two thousand and eight. As part of the FY twenty-three budget, we have budgeted for two new bus leases. Care premiums continue to rise at a pace greater than inflation. FY twenty-one active employee premiums increase between one point five percent and six point five percent depending on carrier and plan. Rates in FY twenty-two increase between one percent and five point five percent depending on carrier and plan. Recent actuarial estimates predict a six point five percent increase in FY twenty-three in a six point, in a six percent increase in FY twenty-four. Beyond premium increases, the cost of retiree health insurance increases proportionately to the number of eligible retirees. Recent actuarial estimates predict a six point five percent per capita increase in FY twenty-three in a six percent per capita increase in FY twenty-four. The high school construction borrowings will lower debt service assessments through the next decade. This chart presents anticipated debt service amounts through the final high school construction debt service payment in FY thirty-eight. Any future debt issuance requires Concord and Carlisle town meeting approval. Here's a summary of the CARES Act monies and ether monies to date. As part of the American Rescue of twenty-twenty-one, the region received one hundred and ninety-three thousand, twenty-five dollars for S R three. The funds are available through September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four. Fund requirements include district plan to safely reopen schools, spending twenty percent of funds to mitigate lost instruction time, plan as to how to use the remaining eighty percent. Consultation with stakeholders to determine local priorities. Assurance of how interventions will respond to academic, social, emotional, mental health needs. Consideration of those disproportionately impacted, including low-income families, students of color, English learners, and students with disabilities. The deadline for the grant submission was October fourth and does not require a breakdown of allocation into yearly increments. After a survey was developed and distributed to staff and families, the following expenditures became the priority. In addition to assessments, the district receives state aid in other revenues. At this time, we level funded chapter seventy and chapter seventy-one revenue. The governor's budget is coming out on January twenty-sixth, and I expect to learn more in the coming days. Excess and deficiency offset is back to three hundred thousand. At some point in the not-so-distant future, we hope to reduce this even further. But since we are at four point nine percent projected, right now, I think we're in good shape to move it in. All the revenues were level funded at this time, so overall, we expect approximately three million, nine hundred and thirty-two thousand, two hundred and forty-one dollars in non-assessment revenue. Assessments are based on the October one enrollment. On October first, Concord had seventy-seven point four one percent of the students, and Carlisle had twenty-two point five nine. These numbers drive everything. The superintendent's request is thirty-six million, six hundred and forty-four thousand, nine hundred and ninety-four dollars. The first box, the first box starts with our operating budget, which excludes transportation and debt. After reducing the state and local revenue, we were just, that we just went over in the last slide. The amount to assess is twenty-eight million, four hundred and eighty-three thousand, four hundred and twenty-six dollars. From there, we assess the transportation costs after we apply our chapter seventy-one reimbursement. The amount of transportation assessment is then ninety thousand, nine hundred and thirty-one dollars. We then break out, I'm sorry, is one hundred and twenty-two thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars. We then break out the debt assessment. Therefore, overall, the region's budget is increasing four point seven seven percent without debt in Concord and four point two three percent in Carlisle. Overall, the assessment without debt increases four point six five percent. And that is the assessment. And that is the presentation.
Great. Thank you. All right, just one thing to note, the Carlisle warrant closes on the twenty-fifth, which is before the state budget comes out.
I will make that change right now. I was gonna stop and ask. I thought it was the twenty-fifth, and I made a last-minute change. I will make that now.
And members of the school committee, you can ask questions now, but we will be discussing this later on in our meeting. And members of the public, if you have any questions, please either use the raise hand feature or turn on your video and let yourself be known. And seen no raised hands and no new videos. Like to move to make a motion. Take a motion to close the hearing.
No move.
Their second?
A second.
Roll call.
I'll vote for it. Anderson, I.
Booth, I.
Morano, I.
Rainey, I.
Most of the I.
Wilson, I, and many thanks, Jared.
Thank you, Jared.
Thank you, Jared.
And now back to our regularly scheduled program to the agenda. Darcy?
She was on, but I think.
I know she had a conflict.
She had to go, yeah.
We'll look forward to a student update later in the month, and on the twenty-fifth. Which means that then we can go to public comment. If there are any members of the public who would like to make a non-budget hearing comment, please raise your hand. Uh, Carlin Reed.
Hi, Carlin Reed, eighty-three wits, and I'm here on behalf of the League Women Voters Voter Service Committee. Joining me is also Nancy Confrey. She's the chair of the Voter Service Committee. We are thrilled to announce that we're going to be holding a candidate forum for the two contestants for school committee for the February third special town election. That candidate forum is on Thursday, January twenty-seven, from seven-thirty to eight-thirty P M. It will be by Zoom. It will be moderated, and will, and the audience will be able to ask questions by chat as well as live feed questions. The program will be recorded. It'll be open to the public, and the video will be posted shortly. Hopefully, so the time we have before the actual election itself. Now, Nancy, I think I covered all the bases. Did I miss anything?
The only thing I would add, Carlin, is if people would like to propose questions to ask during the prepared questions period, please send them to voterservice@lwvcc.org, and they will be put in the pool of questions that we're considering during that period.
Great.
Is there, is there a link on your, I mean, is, can, can that email address be found easily online somewhere or?
Yes, I will also send an email to Cynthia with all of this information, so she can forward it to you. There will be a registration link on the League Women Voters website by Friday. Okay, but again, I will send Cynthia a detailed email so she can forward that to all of you.
That's lwvcc.org is the website. Okay, I think that's it, Sarah. Thanks much for the time.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks for organizing the forum. Are there any other members of the public who have comments? See, see none. Let's move to the reading of the minutes from open sessions of November thirtieth and December seventh. There are a motion to accept those minutes. I'll move it. So moved. I moved to accept the minutes of open session from November thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one, and December seventh, two thousand and twenty-one. Is there a second?
I'll second.
A discussion, if memory serves me correctly, there was a minor change or two made from the draft to the final version. Can anybody help us there?
Yes.
Board, I did make those changes that you had suggested, but I don't think I sent them back out. They were.
Yeah, so.
They were very minor.
They were very minor, and I think I've got them here. Yeah, there was a reference to energy flow, and it was, in fact, revenue flow. So a change from energy to revenue. And I think that was the only change that required any word smithing on Aaron's part.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other discussions?
I'll try to articulate better in the future for Aaron's sake.
Okay. So is there a vote to accept the minutes as noted with the changes?
Yeah, roll call.
Yep.
Anderson, I for both.
Booth, I for both.
Morano, I for both.
Most of the I for region.
Rainey, I for both.
And Wilson for region. Okay. Correspondence. We had one correspondence at the region.
And we had a correspondence at Concord Public Schools regarding literacy.
And we had a correspondence at Concord Public Schools regarding literacy.
Okay. And then, let's see, so now we have chairs and liaisons reports. We go around.
Sarah, I have one request while we're on this that we need a liaison for the calendar committee twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three.
I have that with me. Is that me?
Did we appoint that? I could not remember and didn't get a chance to look back.
I thought we did too.
Yeah, I think that's me.
Great. That's easy.
Soon, Tracy. Alexa?
Yep, I can go. Last night, actually. Eva and I were present at the CPAC board meeting. And there were, actually, it was a pretty robust meeting. One of the things that I know we've all been following as a whole committee is the fact that the CPAC board is no longer subject to open meeting law. So the board has gone through the, or is beginning to go through the process of amending their bylaws and concurrent with that. Because so many things will change, you know, in terms of the norms of, you know, sort of what open meeting law is and means. They are in the process of adopting best practices so that what all the benefits of opening, open meeting law sort of are maintained and the things that really are a hindrance to getting, you know, their work done behind the scenes are, are, are sort of what are amended there. We also discussed as the two co-presidents start embarking on their relationship with the administration, they were updating us on some progress they've made. And I know one of the things that was discussed last night was the potential of a presentation made by the administration. And this is one thing I was hoping to get to have, I don't know if it's discussion or, but just to bring out there tonight about the new dyslexia guidelines that were put out by the state. The, the CPAC had discussed with both Lori and the Director of Student Services, sort of some things they'd like to see in that presentation. And in the meeting last night, there was some discussion about whether that could be, how to sort of make that happen and whether it's something, you know, I think the school committee would be very interested in that presentation as well. So there was, you know, I am gonna put it to Lori and Debbie at some point, not now, to determine whether this would be a presentation that was made to the school committee and we would invite the CPAC and the larger community. Whether it would be something, a presentation that would be for the CPAC that we would invite the school committee to. Or if it would just be, or if the interest could be great enough that it would be a, some sort of public forum. So I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing how that shakes out as we wrap up. You know, our budget and middle school and then we can, and, and put some energy there. I'm trying to think what else, what else, what else. It was, there was a big, it was, it was a lot of a lot, a lot, a lot of detail. I'm going through my notes here. Oh, and then, and the other thing too is I think one of the things that they're working out is, is putting together a robust set of goals. That, and, and they've also developed, because it's a particular interest to this group, a literacy subcommittee. So the larger committee is gonna put together their goals, their subcommittee is gonna put together some goals. So that will help sort of inform their progress and sort of how they work with us. So I think all of those are really positive developments and, you know, I think one of the things that we've all committed to this year is to figure out better ways and processes to have a really productive and collaborative relationship. And, you know, it's, it's, it's not always linear how that happens. I think there's a lot of back and forth between all the relevant stakeholders, but I'm confident that we will get there. Eva, do you have anything to add?
Yes, so in terms of the regional high school side, there was a discussion about consensus on setting up coffees with special education coordinators in February. So I know that there was a very constructive conversation with administration to allow parents to meet these coordinators. And, and the role that they play in guiding the IP process. So that was very, very much welcomed by the CPAC group. There was some discussions about things that they would, that the CPAC would like to put on their website and add the information that the administration is compiling about the programs and certifications and things like that. They talked about crafting minds, literacy program coming, coming up in the future. So there's a lot of, lot of interest in in how the district is working to go, working and going through the Massachusetts guidelines. And I think that's it. I, I, I think you have covered most of it. The other thing, there was another big call out for parents. And sort of a big brainstorming, how to pull in a bigger engagement of family. Helping the parents navigate of, of figuring out the special education in the district for their families. So very robust discussion, a lot of topics covered. I think that's it.
Yeah, I think one final thing, just because sometimes you never know who's gonna watch one of our recordings. They still have some open positions on their board. And, you know, they're always looking for additional parent engagement. So if anyone out there in the world in Concord and Carlisle has an interest or has a has some time, please reach out to the CPAC board. They are anxious for some help and enthusiasm.
Yeah, and I just wanted to add, looking at my notes, the CPAC group was very excited and looking forward to the administration presentation of how how the Concord High, High School and the schools are implementing the guidelines. How, and, and they have specific questions. How is the testing done? And so they, they will be coming back with some of the data asks as they line up with the freshly developed CPAC goals. And I think we have covered everything.
Thank you. That's, that, that's quite an meeting. Yeah. To look forward to, to seeing what happens, the, whether it's the forum, the presentation, however. That gets frustrated and all these other developments. Thank you. Court?
Yes, the Policy Subcommittee will meet this Thursday, ten A M. And meeting links are available on the school and the Concord Town website. That's what I've got. Thank you.
Okay. Tracy?
Okay, so we met on January fifth for D E I and we thank you all for doing the surveys. If you haven't done it yet, that's okay. There's still time to do it. And we had our focus groups, which I think were some really productive discussions that we have with Dr. Blake and Dr. Warnum. Andrew updated us on what he's got going on right now. He's still meeting with groups. He's meeting with I think the LGBTQ plus group at the High School Spectrum. He has an upcoming meeting to be scheduled with CPAC. He's met with some of us. He is gonna continue to, to meet and really focus on developing his strategic plan. So some of the work that we did in our D E I meeting the other day is gonna help kind of shape that for him, looking towards the end of the year. So just coming up, the equity survey results will come probably February. Maybe Andrew will present to us like on that February, March timeline. So that's all a little bit fluid right now. As soon as all of that information gets aggregated and gets to him. And then the other thing we discussed was our school committee training, which the sub, the subcommittee decided that we would go with ideas and Dr. Martin. So we're waiting for that proposal still, but we've been in touch with Karen at Ideas to get that. And it looks like it's probably gonna be like a three, like maybe nine hours in total. So it's up to us if we wanna meet. You know, every other week, if you want it, you meet for two hours at a time, one hour at a time. So they're gonna run us kind of through what the teachers are also doing. So we can have an understanding of what's happening, you know, from the teacher's perspective and from our perspective. And I think we just had some really great discussion the other day. It was a great starting point. So we're gonna continue as a subcommittee of three. There, you know, there's some discussion if we should make it a whole subcommittee. But I think just actually from an equity perspective, we don't wanna, you know, make it so that people can't come to that. So please feel free to come if you're a current school committee member and it's also open to the public. And those meetings are posted online. Our next meeting is February second. And I'm just waiting to hear back from a couple of folks. I believe it's gonna be eleven thirty to one, but if not, it will be twelve to one thirty. So February second is kind of a save the date for now. And that's it.
Thank you. Yep. And we hope to have a proposal on the twenty-fifth for the school committee to review, to, to see about the ideas. Get acquainted with it. Great. Thank you. And I think that's it. Eva, do you have any other updates?
Uh, no, I'm all set.
Okay, all right. So discussion, Dr. Hunter.
Right.
Hold it updates.
Here we go. So it's interesting because I use the same template every time I bring you this and it's fairly startling to see how much had changed in, since December twenty-first, but you're all living that with us and so is the student, staff and parent community. So high levels of the data that we're seeing, which is very on par with all districts, I think. Two hundred and seventeen cases over last week. And reminder of, that's a combination of incoming from the break. Some people reported during the break, some people reported at the end of the break, some people reported right as we returned. So it wasn't a clean divide about what happened on the vacation and what happened last week in school. And then, of course, what evolved as the week went on. So, you know, that's an exceptionally high number. If you look down at where we are for the year, four hundred and fifty-two for the year. So you know, just short of half of those cases happened in one week's time. I'll talk a little on the impacts of, of how that plays out in a minute once we get through the data. This week, as of last night, these numbers I grabbed this morning, so they're not updated from today. But this week, so far, we're at thirty-seven. It's definitely shifted back to what we were seeing the week. We went on break, which was about eighteen to twenty cases a day total. So that's a pattern we're starting to see settle in for this week. That's far better than what was happening last week at two hundred and seventeen. So hopefully that's a sign of progress and stabilizing after the holidays. Most kids are vaccinated. I think that's just a fair way to say it. Almost all staff are vaccinated. As you know, you mandated that, so that's held. It's almost without saying at this point that we assume vaccinated people are getting, are getting COVID. We aren't tracking boosters. We didn't get a chance to do that before the Omicron hit. So we know there are some breakthrough cases. It's not not as, as significant as the, the vaccinated folks though. And just, it's worth noting, even to date with as many cases as we've had in the last few weeks. We're really thankful that people are essentially having mild symptoms and able to, to stay home and anything from asymptomatic to mild symptoms or a flu-like event. And we're just glad that everyone's staying healthy. This is last week's pool testing results. I'm still aggregating the amount of pool testing we did yesterday. It is higher than that, I believe. I know the high school was up another twenty kids or so. We don't have pool testing results back from yesterday yet. The labs, as you're well aware, and the media overwhelmed and slower to process. So I'm gonna a little bit of hurry up and wait on that. We did make some changes to pool testing this week based on C I C, which is the vendor. And Desi, who are trying to help us be more efficient. The amount of follow-up required last week when thirty-some pools come back positive and there's ten or so people in each pool really, really was overwhelming to then have to antigen test every pool. And then find the individual that's positive and then do any follow-up then. So with support from the state, we are streamlining that to now three tests in a pool, which is gonna we think should be a lot less follow-up when we get positive pools back. We are expecting some. We're certainly hoping it's down from last week. But hopefully making that a little less cumbersome will make it more doable. There were really rough days Monday and Tuesday last week with so many cases and pool testing and and such. So we're, we're ready for tomorrow, assuming the test results come back. And following up as needed. Definitely worth noting, we are tracking where cases are occurring, especially now that we're getting past the vacation. So we had spotted clusters, the best word I have, I suppose, a cluster in a kindergarten room at Theroe. That late last week started to feel more like a pattern, couple more cases over the weekend. I spoke to Desi. You'll remember, I, I don't have full authority on closing classrooms, grade levels or schools unless I use snow days, which obviously you're only gonna do that at a school-wide level. So the direction we had been given as superintendents, as recently as last Wednesday, we've been meeting with the Commissioner Weekly. Was to put the call into Desi, talk to the public health officials, tell the story and start to get some feedback. So we did that yesterday. Talked with Tricia McGeehan here in Concord and then talked to the state. And the, the common conclusion was if we saw more cases within a short amount of time, we would, we would likely go remote there. It's also happens to be a very small classroom because of the fire. So five of fourteen kids felt significant enough and an adult that the recommendation, especially with the young kids, and I wanna just stress every time we see a little group like that, it's gonna be about context, age of the kids. All of the various factors that go into it that may or may not lead to the same outcome. Because remote isn't our first choice at all. But in this, this case, we did make the decision to send them remote for three days. Again, very short term, not long term, back to the schedule we used last year of three hours in the morning. Provided devices if families, families needed them today. And expecting to really be back to normal by Tuesday of next week after the three-day weekend. So I, I, I wish we hadn't gotten to that point, but now that we have experienced it and made the decision, I think we've got an understanding. I'm starting to gain understanding of where the state's mindset is. And they were quite responsive and supportive and we're, we're grateful for that. So vaccination rates, I do have updates from the elementary schools. We're still gathering grade six. And certainly some of this is still moving. Fully vaccinated K five, we have seventy-six percent of kids, partially vaccinated eight percent. So we're, we're strong there and likely those numbers will tighten up a bit more. I think a little frustrating for parents who believe their child was just fully vaccinated within the last couple of weeks and Omicron took away some of the benefit of that unfortunately, but it's certainly an important data point. And one that's gonna serve us well down the, down the road. And just a big reminder that what shifted as that many elementary kids were fully vaccinated is test and stay has shifted to the backdrop because we don't do test and stay with vaccinated kids. And I'm gonna put an asterisk next to that. In certain situations, we have continued to do some antigen testing like the Thero setting to know what's going on in that room. So we're, we're listening for the state. You heard the governor announce today, twenty-seven million tests were just purchased statewide with the priority coming to the schools. The superintendents have sent feedback that, to some extent, we would almost rather in this environment, if they can't afford everything, sideline pool testing and give us enough antigen tests for everyone, because that's the immediate current information that we need. The pool testing delays and other pieces aren't quite the same fit to the new world we're in. So things are shifting again and we're, we're doing well. I can't say enough about the flexibility of staff. I can't say enough about the flexibility of staff, kids, et cetera. Just a data point I don't have on here, but I'm watching very closely on a daily basis. We're averaging eight to ten percent of the staff out every day. So there's always some fluid moving pieces about that. It, you know, it can depend on what pocket of people it hits as well. And it might only take two people in a certain category of employee that will have more impact. So that's an ongoing moving aspect for us that we are juggling. And then student absences, we're running about a hundred and fifty-ish. It's a little twenty plus or, or minus at the high school daily. Just under a hundred average at the middle school and somewhere around fifty to a peak of seventy at the elementaries on a day-to-day basis. So daily, we're seeing three hundred and fifty to four hundred kids absent. I think the really interesting point with the five-day quarantine, those, those individuals, adults or kids are always swapping out. And that's a very big positive and it's also a challenge because it means while those numbers maybe aren't growing, and I'm glad to see that. Different kids are out or different staff is out and that comes with positives and challenges. So. So there's a lot of COVID back in our lives here and we're working really hard to make sure instruction stays available to kids and curriculum stays available. Our extracurriculars are still running. We're watching for any trends there. Not thankfully, knock on my wood desk here, not seeing anything concerning right now, even in the sports arena. So that's really good news. And just, you know, day-to-day monitoring, monitoring all of it. Desi did extend the mask mandate yesterday through the end of February, so that's formally intact. We met with the commissioner last week. I won't be surprised if we meet again before the week is out. I am in discussion with the vaccine vendor and Trish McGeehan, Trish is the lead, I'm just the scheduler, to look at a vaccine clinic again at the end of January. We know the booster being approved for the twelve to fifteen-year-olds was really proximate to last week's clinic. And there's definitely some hope for, for making access to that available to the community. So that's, those are the really high levels and we're working really hard at, at this again at the moment. Not to the sacrifice of everything, but we are working hard at it, especially I'm going to shout out my five principals that literally are the cogs that keep all the staffing holes closed and keep the student pieces moving. And then a really big shout out to the nursing staff who, there's no avoiding their frontline role in this. And I continually hear, no matter how busy they are or how much is on their plates, the TLC that's happening with families and the time they're taking, because they're really educating about COVID as well, of course. And parents feel really supported. So I'm incredibly grateful for their work over the last few weeks here. So that's where we are. Happy to talk on any particular aspects or questions.
Thank you. Thank you for all of that. This is not the twenty twenty-two. We were all thinking we were coming in. School command members, do you have any questions, comments?
This one is not COVID-specific. Just, I'm confused a little bit about the, the relationship to small class at Thoro and fire. It's counterintuitive.
So when we first, when, when Mrs. Charles in August had to put her classrooms into the Thero building without the mods, creatively she reallocated the kindergartners a little bit, so one class was smaller. Because the space they were in was small, smaller than a full-size classroom. So it contained the size of that one group. The others all stayed very reasonable, but we had a purposeful inequity there a little bit because of the space initially from September through November. So I don't, I can't explain why that anomaly then tracked to this cluster of cases because they are in a full-size classroom and have been since November. And they're not in the mods, they're in the regular downstairs of the building. So.
Quite simply of necessity, that group got smaller and then that group got a bigger rum.
Yeah.
Later on. Okay. Thank you. Makes perfect sense now. Thank you.
Yeah. I mean, to, to, to thread fire and pandemic together, it becomes a little surreal at points how much Thero has managed this year. So.
And we increased nursing staff and you appropriately gave them a shout out, just as we should give you a shout out for your COVID vigilance, which seems to be unceasing. Your estimation, have we right-sized with the, both the increase in nursing personnel and the elevation of a lead nurse position? Does that seem to be just right for us?
Yeah, for, for good or bad, we've had nursing absences for various reasons. And the fact that we increased has given us more ability to manage that. But even pre, pre surge here, it was a very wise move in terms of what we were able to do with the high school, but also support the other nurses, our lead nurse. Again, Lisa Kosky, I, she is such an anchor to this whole operation, both COVID and otherwise in our health systems. It's really freed her up to be leader in a really, really visible way and incredible support to the other, the other nurses who can feel isolated for sure.
And we have noted in months ago, and shouldn't forget, and we don't, that mental health is on their radar as well, certainly.
No question.
Last question for me, eight to ten percent absences. Does this mean we've got a sub-crisis or, or are we approaching one? How are we doing?
Uh, we're back to where we were a year ago, almost, almost operating the way we were when we weren't allowing subs in. We are allowing them in, but there's no huge pool of people. So we're, we're back reallocating staff depending on who's available using support staff to, to cover classrooms, et cetera. So it's not ideal. It's, I feel very fortunate that we have the support staff we have, that we can reallocate. The districts you're here closing, I don't think have as, as many options as we do. It's a juggling act every morning though, for sure, at the building level to see who's out. And most of it, I scan the list every day to see who's, who's not in and why. And it's, it's mostly COVID exposures, COVID illness, or that occasional blip of childcare where the daycare says we're closing for a few days. So it's exactly what we lived a year ago.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thanks for your questions.
And I just had just one comment for Lori and for Trish. The vaccine clinic was amazing. So thank you for that. Super organized. Really helpful for everyone in the town, people with kids, they did take some walk-ins. The end is very quiet. So if there's another clinic, you know, that maybe that gets out there to people that if there's any leftover at the end, you want to come at eight-thirty. Well, not eight-thirty because then they'll be staying too late, but it was really, really well done. So thank you for that.
And that turned into, you know, needing a regroup pretty late in the game because COVID protocols had to be part of the clinic. You know, Trisha, Trish called me and said, I don't need the vaccine clinic to be a super-spreader event. That would be ironic. So she had a lot of amazing strategies for that and people waiting outside and everybody adjusting on the fly, just like everybody is. So.
And to that end, I will say, you mentioned the unfortunate, if you will, timing of the booster approval for the younger set with the timing of the clinic. I have gotten a lot of inquiries about the, about a possible vaccine clinic more than even before. So if you could ever book that, I think there would be significant interest.
Yeah, we're honing in on a date that I think should get confirmed tomorrow.
Excellent.
Or, or certainly not many days after. So that's good. Good news.
And just a comment in addition to the updates on COVID. I've heard from few Carlyle families of high schoolers and everyone is, I'm, I'm getting a lot, a lot of great feedback about Mr. Mastro's outreach to families, that letter that went out to high schoolers and families. So definitely decreased the anxiety levels around terms. And people are now very happy with the solution. Managing, balancing, the balancing act between our health, mental health, the educational needs and the COVID situation. So grateful for, for all the extra hard work and that's out-of-backs thinking to the needs of the students.
Yeah, I will agree with you there. They, they owned that and creatively dove into it. And as a, as a faculty and as a leadership team, which is the department chairs, came up with an idea. I got looped in at the end and said, are you good with it? And off and running they were. And of course, they did it very quickly, as you know. So really, I think, you know, there are moments in all of this that where you see all the initiatives and objectives start to overlap. And I agree with you. I think mental health was very front and center in that, you know, plan that was both academic and COVID-related all at the same time. So thanks. I'm glad you mentioned it. I'll pass that along.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Hunter.
Thank you. Keep you posted.
And thank you to, to the, to, well, just everybody, but.
Everybody.
There's, there's nobody not to thank.
That's the right answer.
The bus drivers, the food service, the nurses, the teachers, the support staff, the administration, you know. So thank you. Onto policy. Here we have our community use regulations and fees. Court, would you like to take the lead?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. If we want to do a screen share, we, we debated as a subcommittee whether we would lump together the policy and some of the accompanying regs and decided to keep them separate. Dr. Hunter thought this was the cleanest way to do it. We concurred. So we bring you a revised community use policy and regulations and fees. This last received a thorough examination and updating in two thousand and nine. So this is number one, a long overdue. But number two, I think users would be gratified to learn that the fees have not escalated wildly in those intervening twelve years. The, I believe, okay, what you've got on your screen now is the policy that is general in nature, that seeks to inform the community and users specifically that we do intend to make public schools available for community use after hours with the one overarching condition, and that is that nothing interferes with our capacity to have these schools open and ready to go at dawn the next morning for school-based activities. We are making very, very clear in the policy that summer users, some of these are quite ambitious programs that operate in the summer, will be able to queue up with their requests at any time. And then there's a February one initial review of those requests. Also because there are some fee changes as well as policy clarity. I don't think there's any significant policy change in terms of regulations, usage. But because the fees have changed, the business office has notified the big summer users to be mindful of what we're doing here. So they can take any changes into account in their own budgeting and scheduling and so on. So we have this policy that was recommended at our last meeting for a first read tonight. And if you then see fit, it could be adopted at a subsequent meeting. And I pause here, turn to my colleagues on the subcommittee, anything I've neglected at this KF level, the, the general introductory piece?
Very thorough. Thank you.
Can you guys refresh my memory? Facilities would include certainly the buildings, the interior use of the buildings. And do they also include field grounds and other facilities?
Yeah, surprisingly little by way of outdoor facility because most of those fall under the purview of the town of Concord.
That's what I thought. Okay.
And excellent question. And you're going to see in the next section that we actually have provided links to, for example, Concord Recreation for their properties, Concord Board of Health for licenses that a user might require and so on. So we've tried to get and make it, especially we had a pretty comprehensive picture of how to do this.
Right.
Good question. You're going to see that shortly. So specifically for fields, there are certain fields at the high school that we have after-hours jurisdiction of, and that's it. Not at the, not at the K eight.
And addition, in addition to what we've already discussed here, is, is there a time, you have mentioned that last time we have reviewed the facility use policy was in two thousand and nine. I, I, if I recall, we had, we talked about maybe bringing this back in about a year just to, just having a conversation with the administration to see how the new policies are working, if there's any tweaking. Is that, is that, is my memory?
Excellent point. Yeah, we, we're very sensitive to any unintended consequences that the business office would know about first and could apprise us. And speaking of the business office, they joined Dr. Hunter in working very carefully with us. And we're, we're very thorough with us. So we, we want to thank them as well. We wouldn't be here without their, their efforts and their technical support. I will ask that we look at KF dash R and there we go. And so here we begin, and we're, we're going to take you through about five pages here. We begin with a repeat of the priorities. Who gets first crack at it and second crack at it and so on. And then we move to something brand new. And I, I did misspeak. There is something significant and new, and that is a frequent user discount. The idea here is that if a, a group in the school district were to reserve a bulk of time, there's an economy of scale that we benefit from. And therefore we want to extend that benefit to them as well. So we're looking at a reduction in the fee of fifteen percent for a rental transaction that adds up to forty hours or more and twenty-five percent for something that is handled in a single rental transaction equalling eighty-plus. And important proviso here, this refers to the facility rental fees and it has no bearing whatsoever on any personnel fees that have to be borne by the user. And those are activity-specific custodians, AV technicians, and so on, food service perhaps. Those, those are, those are billed out according to contractual rates. And you'll see those shortly. We have a supervision section that makes clear again our insistence that the buildings be protected for their primary use the following day. And stop us as we scroll through this for any careful parsing of, of any of this. Hearing none, I'll ask that we move on. So now we've got our restrictions and a lot of these are baked into Commonwealth law as well as our own policies that follow on around smoking and toxicants. Then we've got our food and beverage and you see embedded here a link to the Concord Board of Health. Anti-hazing, which is under state law, of course. Section E, we give the principal or his or her designee authority to take a look at what's happening by way of decorations for safety and building, building protection, shall we say. Fire prevention. If, for example, a drama production had to have a candle for five minutes, there'd be, probably be a contractual obligation for somebody from the fire department. Because we've got to take great, great pains around safety. So we've got all of those authorities with our superintendent in the lead on that, what might be required for personnel. The use of facilities section talks about the fact that when there is a specific area of a building called out or rooms, that's not something that has any ambiguity about it. And we don't have building creep in the middle of a rental that we wouldn't be prepared to handle with our building service personnel. H, there is a building service worker or custodian assigned, and that's also in keeping with the contract with our building service workers in regard to quote unquote outside users. Concessions fall under Board of Health regulations, perhaps. Depends on the nature of what they're doing. So again, we call out that link to the Board of Health and the, the way to receive that permission, seek that permission. We are concerned about our gymnasium floors, hence the reference to footwear that we would be quite strict about. Raffles fall under both state and town guidance. Now, yes, the high school is a regional school district, a political subdivision independent, but not for purposes of pulling permits. That's where we turn to the Town of Concord. We want buildings empty at 10:00 PM, although Dr. Hunter has discretion to authorize use after that hour. The business office will require the, the user provide a certificate of insurance that has the Public Schools Region or CPS as a named insured with, as you see, a million per occurrence, three million aggregate, and an umbrella policy as well. Workman's comp as required by law. Custodial coverage, we return to that and spell out that there shall be a custodian, that she or he will have certain duties on behalf of the user in order to ensure good use of the school for that user and protection of the school for return to duty the next morning. Again, a gymnasium reference here. Now we get specific, we saw dances before, now we see use of gymnasiums, and the reference to sneakers are a generic term for shoes that are unlikely to damage one of those floors. Use of fields to Alexa's point here, and we spell it out. Facility, I'll read, facility use policies refers to CCHS baseball softball field and Memorial Field Stadium. Everything else is going to fall under the Town of Concord by virtue of other agreements that have been affected over the years. The high school tennis courts can be rented, there is a listing in the fee schedule, but we caution people that the, the availability is quite limited. But you and I know there are courts right down the street as well as other locations around the district. We can and will provide for audiovisual equipment and technician support as necessary. And we have the right to cancel an event due to school cancellation or other cause. And we give the superintendent rather unfettered authority to add additional requirements as she sees fit because some rentals could be unusual in nature, and we can't predict every, every type of occurrence. We have a very good track record with a collection of fees, we know our users well. So the billing occurs after the fact, rather than estimated billing or deposits upfront. And this is something that the business office continues to be confident is going to work out well for the districts. So with that, I think we're going to turn to the fee schedule. Little bit of cleanup here, we can drop the highlighting before we authorize this or approve this next week. You see these, these fees would be effective July 1 of this year. So people have five and a half or six months to anticipate these changes. And if you need to, we can pull old figures from 2009. But I assure you, these are not wild increases. And in fact, got some careful scrutiny by the business office first, then by the subcommittee, then again by the business office. And we think these are rates that are ones that will not discourage community users, but not be so low as to be subsidized and too attractive that would distract from our main mission of K-12 education during the day. So we can scroll down here, and you'll see that we have called out the figures rather specifically. We tried to make it very clear what was K8 and what was high school. And most of those distinctions occur in the fee schedule, not in the regulations themselves. Those regulations seem to be broadly applicable K-12 in all of the facilities. So there you have it. The subcommittee would be happy to entertain any questions.
Court, can I just also add that we did look at these schedules of other districts to make sure we were in the right ballpark?
Thank you very much, yeah. We didn't want to be in competition with other districts where we're looking more attractive or less attractive. We wanted that to be a non-issue for a local user.
Yes, thank you, Tracy. I, I had that comment, and also looking back at our links to the town website, and there are some links to, whether it's state law or guidelines. Concord, Concord's town website pretty much might stay the same in terms of links. However, those links in, those state links to, to particular laws may change at some point. Would, would, should we add just the name of a particular guideline law? State law, for example, like there was a hazing line?
So I, I, what I'm hearing is link and the official title of the document. So that if the link gets lost, the title remains.
Correct.
Okay, yeah. Good point. So hearing no objection, we could ask that that be incorporated into the version that comes our way next week. I don't think that's a substantial change that requires any further deliberation on our part. Because it doesn't, doesn't change any, any of the information in the document. Simply makes it easier for people to track, should there be a change. Do we have a tacit endorsement of that idea that we dropped?
Super great, smart.
Thank you.
Any questions? Yes, please.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, who was speaking?
That's Cynthia, sorry. I want to thank you all for doing this work. It's a lot, I know it is. I just want to confirm, so the fees are per hour?
So you, very good point, the fees are per hour. So that second highlight with a question mark gets pulled out of there. And we'll make as bold as we can the highlight above it that reads notes are all per hour unless stated otherwise. And then we have minimums as well.
Great.
That apply sometimes, not always.
And I'm a little unsure of the group definition, so maybe you can give me some examples of group one, I assume in-house means?
Yes, this would be a, this would be a school activity. Or this would be a town government activity for which there would not be a rental charge, but there would be a personnel offset by that user, by that government user. The second one would be the local nonprofit group. Or this could be somebody outside of Carlisle and Concord who could provide us evidence that they were serving a majority of Concord and Carlisle residents and/or Concord and Carlisle residents in that activity. You could have a Boston address, but if it was in service of Concord and Carlisle, you would fall under that group two. And then, and then group three is all others. Which would, for example, would be an out-of-district company that wants to have a, have a basketball fundraiser. I'm making this up, but I think that's.
So just to be clear to people listening in, so all Concord and Carlisle and Concord Carlisle youth sports are in group one, is that correct?
Nope, they're in group two.
So just to be clear, because of the agreement that we signed, charge youth sports on our high school?
Okay, all right, well, let's go back to the earlier language then, where in the beginning of the document, we call it out as well, and let's compare the two. Thank you, Cynthia. So we're going to go up to the very top. Okay, so we have this, which needs to reasonably conform with the piece that was put in at the end.
So the business office can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe at our Concord Public Schools, we don't charge, do we charge the basketball fee on top of the custodian?
We just, we just charge custodial fees, right Ian, for that, yeah?
Right, so right now for X, for outdoor events at the high school on our fields, youth sports do not pay a fee?
So the town-run youth sports don't pay a fee, right? So Carlisle and Concord Town wreck apart in youth sports, yeah?
They're not, no, what, what, they're Concord Carlisle Youth Baseball is not town-run?
I had to check, yeah, I'm not sure if they are or not, but yeah, there's an agreement.
When we finished off the CCI play activity, preventing us from charging all youth sports.
All youth sports that are Concord Carlisle nonprofit?
Correct.
Okay.
Exactly.
So this, this is, this is important. And I think that thank you for surfacing this. I think we've got to go back, Ian, and we can work on this together such that at the next reading, this is called out, so there's no confusion.
Right, that's, that's probably why I was so keen on having two sets, because they're very different. But I mean, I think you can fix, it just, yeah, you could just have some other way to define group one.
Not only change how we define group one, but also reference in this introductory section the, the same thing, and make them more consistent.
Right. And then another question I have is, how do we handle summer custodians?
So they have a, they have a summer shift? So anything outside of those summer shifts is billable on top of what is already billable during the day?
So, so for the high school, for example, how many custodians would be there if the building was closed?
Depends on the activity. Probably, probably two.
I'm saying if the building is closed.
Yep. Depending on if there's a camp going during the summer and it's outdoors.
Actually, there's no camp. What, what, what's going on in the building?
If, if no one is in there, their hours during the summer, I want to say are six to two. We have nine custodians at the high school. So anything after two, depending on what's being rented out, we would bill the custodial or close the building.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we might, might need to carve out a little something to make that clear. It's different than regular, I mean, obviously we don't rent the building out when the students are there, but I, you know, just somehow or another, after two or something, I don't know. But just think about it.
Yeah. And I'll confirm those hours, I believe it is.
The one other thing, comment I have is that many other facility documents do charge an energy fee?
Ones that we looked at not, and actually one in my past did. We did not recommend it, we think it's sort of embedded in the costs.
Okay, that's fine. Taking that into account.
Yeah.
So I assume we're going to use more energy when the summer camps are in there, obviously not attached to outdoor activities. And then who has jurisdiction over the upper grass field?
Town.
It is the town?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's right, Ian, right, that they have it over the grass field as well.
Yeah.
So what I'm hearing so far is we've got to clean this up such that the town, district-based sports organizations know where they stand in this pecking order. And we need to call out what people would not expect in terms of possible additional coverage after 2:00 PM on, on summer weekdays.
Yeah. Right? And is the shifts, are the shifts the same at the Concord Public School buildings in terms of using indoor facilities?
I believe they are.
With the exception maybe of summer school, where we, we know we need summer school specific coverage.
Yeah. Okay.
Jared, I'm confident we can work this up and get it to the policy subcommittee and then the committee at our next meeting, knowing that there's nothing significant in our approach here. Rather, what we're trying to do is get accuracy and clarity about the, the user groups. Would have, would have slipped by me, Cynthia, so thank you.
Yeah, it's, yeah. And I'd have to, probably somebody should dig up the language that's in that signed agreement.
We can do that.
I have it somewhere, but I think it might even be on our website.
I think I have it as well, yeah. Good. Any other questions, comments, concerns?
Thank you, guys, this is thorough.
Well, we hope so, and, and Eva made the important point that the business office will inform us if we've made any, any missteps here. We're doing a bit of catch-up here, and we're, we're hopeful it will prove to be wise and sensible. But we'll, we'll, we'll be ready for feedback.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay, we're back to our budget now. Leave, yeah. Jared? Well, I don't know, I mean, we've seen the budget presentation, it's just a chance for us to talk about, are there any questions from anybody, any?
This is just regional talk, right?
This is just regional talk right now.
I think too, we wanted to frame where we were with the guidelines and just talk on what your next steps might be or not be. So we can revisit, this is, these are slides we brought you in passing, really, back in December. The guideline Delta right now, and Carlisle has met the Concord guideline, so. Uh, the guideline Delta right now, um, and Carlisle has met the Concord guideline, so everyone is synced up. Is a difference of what equates to $240,813 overall. So that's, that could be the discussion you have tonight is to, to hear some of our ideas on what we, we might recommend. For that and then talk on any of your ideas and, um, decide if you're interested and ready to act on anything or not. So Jared could go through this if that's helpful, or we can hold off and talk in more general terms.
Well, you anticipated my question about the Carlisle guideline, so if there were any more, uh, efforts possible toward. Concord guideline, it would pull Carlisle below Carlisle guideline. Is that correct?
Yeah, I can go through it. So basically what this is, is obviously the super intense recommended budget is the top, uh, numbers, thirty-six million, six hundred and forty-four. Concord's assessment without debt is, is the one that they look at, that's a million, uh, seven hundred and, uh, seven thousand, nine hundred and seventy-two dollars. Right now, their guideline is the twenty-one million, nine fifty-seven, one fifty-one, which was eight hundred and twenty-one thousand, five hundred and fifty-eight. Over FY twenty-two's budget. The Delta is a hundred and eighty-six, four, one, four. For Concord, but when you put it into the spreadsheet, to get to a hundred and eighty-six, oh, one, four, we actually have to come up with. Two hundred and forty, uh, thousand, eight hundred and thirteen dollars. And here were some things that we discuss at the guideline if the committee so chooses.
Yeah, and, and Court, I think what you're asking is the Carlisle guideline. Are you, are you okay now?
Yeah, no, I get it, no, it, yeah, because of the assessment to, uh, to. Pull, pull it down for Concord is to pull it down for Carlisle too, hence the second number, two forty.
Right, so, yeah, yeah, if we find that two forty, then we'll be in, in compliance with, like, we'll be in, in agreement with both guidelines.
So the way I always look at it, for everybody's, for every three dollars we have to reduce at Concord, you have to reduce one at Carlisle, give or take.
So I think the obvious question for me, I don't want to take up too much airspace here. Uh, can, uh, you speak to the, uh, implications that would reach classrooms, if any? Uh, were we to move toward some of these, uh, reductions?
Well, so you've named that, I think, is that we're not recommending implications that directly touch classrooms, so Jared, why don't you go through what's here quickly?
So this is a mixture of both general fund implications as well as revenue implications. So as I said before, January twenty-sixth, the, um, the governor's budget is coming out. We expect an increase at the time when I first gave the presentation, the December seventh. I, I, I wasn't ready to give my estimates yet. Based on what we sort of know right now, um, we felt comfortable that we could increase our chapter one seventy, uh, chapter seventy-one transportation. Revenue portion by fifty thousand, uh, that would decrease assessments by fifty thousand. In addition, we felt that we could go up to about three percent, that was a high number that we were hearing for chapter seventy, which is equivalent to about eighty-seven thousand. Um, in addition, we were notified after, um, the presentation on the seventh, that we would be getting, uh, a Mecco supplemental special ed grant. So what we can do is we can reduce salaries, special ed salaries, and put those into that grant as an offset. Uh, and lastly, we could take a gamble or risk, um, at this time, we anticipate. Ending FY, even though it's only January, FY twenty-two with, um, hopefully a max circuit breaker carryover. So what this would do is, in our offsets in the budget, we would just increase our circuit breaker offset. An additional sixty-three thousand, eight hundred and thirteen dollars. It's a gamble, but we have been prepaying tuitions the last couple of years, uh, so that is. Uh, embedded in the FY twenty-two budget, which will potentially allow me to, to end with the surplus. So therefore, with all of these four recommendations, uh, could get us to the guideline.
And I think it's important to note that part of the rationale for being comfortable is our reserves are still flush. Both circuit breaker and E and D. And, um, I, you know, we want to be respectful of the fact we are flush with reserves and. Can, I think, be supportive of both communities to, to make this, um, pretty streamlined budget process.
And as you know too, for, for revenue, when you, when you vote a budget, the revenue ha- has to match the expenditures. But if for some reason you are short on your revenue, there's, uh, there's a few things that can make up that shortfall. First, E and D would be reduced to cover that additional revenue. Uh, or second, if there was any expenditures, uh, surpluses in the general fund account, that would offset it. So while it's not great to have a shortfall in revenue, with the savings, uh, with the contingencies that we have, especially in E and D. It's going to cover that shortfall.
You're saying if, if the budgets come, the state budget comes differently in the chapter.
If we don't get eighty-seven thousand, or we don't get fifty thousand, it, you know, there's a way to, to, to make that up.
Okay, and then what's going to happen with, um, uh, prepaying for the following? Year.
Uh, right now, we, we hope to, uh, hope to be able to prepay. I usually, yeah, know where we're going to start ending, um, right at the beginning of the springtime, right around April first. A little bit beforehand, we start planning ahead, um, so right now, all of our numbers are tracking well, um. But as I said before, this is still a difficult year with all the COVID expenditures, all the grants. We're sort of bottom line borrowing, uh, better, bottom line budgeting, um, and, uh, right now, I feel comfortable with our available balance. That we're going to be able to at least prepay some.
Which of course, we're going to bring to you as we get closer to the close of FY twenty-two for your decision to do that or not.
And I just have a sort of micro question, but I'm kind of confused now. So in the presentation, um, we. The Mecco director is a point four at the Concord Public Schools, but a point six, isn't that the reverse of our formula?
It doesn't be, it doesn't necessarily have to be that way, um, when we talked to, when we did the Mecco grant. And the way that the Mecco grant works is you don't have to do the formula base. Um, after talking to Andrew, a lot of his time is, is spent at the high school, so it is justifiable.
That's Mecco.
So what that would do, and I didn't feel.
Same formula.
Yeah, so the way that that would work, if I increased the general fund. With the point six, point four, that would have increased the CPS budget.
Right, but that's the right. I think we should be consistent in our split on staff.
There are staff that, I agree, but if, if, if the time is spent at, like, we, if the time is spent at the high school, it is just fun. But, yeah.
Well, what do others in the committee think about that?
Everything else is always the other way, is always point four to point six.
Right, that's what I was sort of, yeah.
It, it strikes me, we're doing it because it's a convenient fix that might have unfortunate implications longer term.
But I guess, wasn't it, wasn't it our, uh, point to put this into the budget versus taking it from a Mecco grant?
Yes, that, that's, that's fine, but it's the, it's the split that's the issue. So taking it from the Mecco grant and putting into both the CPS budget and the CC budget. The, the balance that goes to either of those budgets should be in accordance with how. All the other things that are split, you know, between.
Well, my question is though, Jared, you said that there seems to be, um. I don't want to use the word disproportionate, but if in fact, our needs vis a vis. Um, diversity, equity and inclusion for this year or any years seem to be disproportionate. Keep saying disproportionate, seem to be, you know, more heavily required, needed. If, if there is more work to do at, in, you know, with the grade nine through twelve community. Then that would make sense to me, um, and I do think, you know, the way this year has played out. Um, especially sort of the needs of the students as, as they engage with Andrew, it does. That doesn't seem to be. Um, a matter of convenience, that does seem to be sort of the way I see thing this year having evolved in a genuine kind of way.
Well, I, I have a serious disagreement with you. It's very important that we signal to the community, this is a pre-K through twelve effort. And that we. Apportion the work between the two districts and K, pre-K twelve, eight is much bigger than the high school. So I think.
I think any of the positions that are split, whether it's mine or any of the central office positions, Kristen's probably another more. Equal, you know, counterpart to Andrew, you know, they ebb and flow depending on the year, depending on the initiatives. It doesn't mean you're not paying attention to the rest of the district, it just means there's particular concentrations going on in one place for a time being. I think we're fine if we go back to sixty forty, the Concord CCHS formula you're used to. I don't think that's a huge issue, because we're going to have other things to talk about at the Concord budget anyway. Um, so if you're, as a committee, in agreement that it should align with the others, knowing that the time actually ebbs and flows.
Oh, yeah.
Totally fine. So that's what these conversations are about, is feedback on things like that, so let's just.
You know, so that both towns know that we're consistent. And I know sometimes we do a fifty-fifty on other things, but it just seems like this is too far out of skew.
And I thought that when we did the Mecco grants, when, when it was presented there, it was the forty-sixty.
No, it was, so Mecco, and this is the way it's been for a number of years, the Mecco director was sixty, forty high school. CPS and again.
Okay.
That's, and the DEI was the same way, and I didn't feel comfortable increasing the CPS budget without. Telling you all that, and that's why I put it back into the general fund as a point four CPS, point six. Not out of convenience, I, 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 I couldn't raise the budget that, that would have changed everything. So to do this is going to increase, just so you know, is going to increase the CPS budget.
Yep, I do understand.
Great.
And so, so all of these recommendations that you're making, basically, we're at the guideline. That's, that's.
That's the bottom line of the high school, we could be a guideline if you want it to be, yeah.
So I do have a question about buses, electric buses. And. I guess I just don't know what the plan is or what our opportunities are with regional reimbursement, with the VW fund.
Yeah, so right now, the, the VW fund there, it's, uh, there's no new news about it. Um, but we're constantly, you know, looking for it, and, you know, we'll be the first ones to tell you when it comes out. The way that the electric bus works with reimbursements from the, uh, from the state. Um, so if we get a electric bus at CPS, we don't get any regional transportation, obviously, reimbursement. At the high school, the way that it works is, we buy an electric bus, once that bus is on the road. Uh, and we report it to the state, the state will reimburse us up to approximately, right now, I use a seventy percent number. Will reimburse us seventy percent over the following five years after it's on the road. So when we get this electric bus on the road, um, say we got an electric bus next year, it gets on the road next, you know, winter. Then starting in FY twenty-four, we'll get reimbursed, uh, over five years for that, um, for that cost.
And can I just ask, how long does it take to get on the road and why does it take that long?
Yeah, it's taking, because truthfully, it's such a new technology, all the inspections, I was talking to Ian and John about it. All the new inspections, just, it, it takes, it's not even like weeks, it feels like it's taking two months. We got this in in November, and it's still not on the road, just to all the requirements from, um, the state and, uh, and everything. And Ian, feel free to, to add.
Yeah, it'll, it'll be, it'll be quicker in the future, but it's just because it's so new, the inspectors are kind of like training on it almost, and they're going through to make sure it meets all the state laws, so.
Thank you.
The other tricky part about, oh, sorry Court, uh, the other tricky part about the reimbursement is we front-load the money, and then the state. Pays us back over time, so that's always worth, just considering that you're going to front-load three hundred some thousand. It's not like some of the way other subsidies work, where it's an automatic in our pockets, we're only cat, you know, putting out a hundred thousand in cash. So there's a cash flow potential challenge there, for sure.
Is the, is the reimbursement, I mean, is that a sure, uh, is it a known, or it's, it? It's an idealized, it's a, like, could be as much as.
Right now, it's a known. Um, depending if Concord decides to get ten new electric bus, that buses that could change, but right now, it's a known. We get reimbursed on it, but not many, uh, regions are, are getting all electric buses.
It's a, it's a known under current law.
Yeah, it could change.
If I heard you correctly, it's region only.
Correct.
And if I, I just stood earlier tonight. Uh, our two budget proposals call for putting a total of four diesel buses under lease on the road. Um, the, the issue I think we all have to live with, as, as, as the town has to live with is. This is a twelve-year decision, um, that it's going to make it harder to. Uh, re- replace, we're not going to replace these buses with electric for over a decade. So we've, we've made our pipeline problem a little bit worse. Anticipating more electrification, so it is, it is a heck of a dilemma. It's not going to go down particularly well in some quarters of town.
I guess I have a couple of thoughts, one is, of course, we all wish we could be buying electric buses, that's, that's a clear assumption, um, second of all, I. Chapter seventy-one, which is the reimbursement for regional districts from the state, the intent of that is to motivate regionalization. Not to motivate sustainable transportation, it's to offset the costs of transporting across multiple communities, et cetera. So I just, I do think you're tempting fate a little, if you push that too far, I think they're, because of the cost, they're gonna, they're gonna tighten that up and say, excuse. Excuse me, we're, we're, we're taking it to, to a different purpose. The other thing we're aware of and watching carefully, and Brian Folds has been in touch with us, who's such a strong advocate on this topic for us. There's clearly going to be some federal money over the coming years here, and he's pushing really hard to make sure the town in Massachusetts accesses it. So that is in its infancy conversation, Brian emailed a number of us at the town and schools this week. About the process and how we need to be sure we're paying close attention, and of course, it's going to be full of bureaucracy. Um, but it does seem like there's some.
That to the committees, members?
Did I forward that? Yeah, of course.
Um, so the one thing I'm a little confused about, so there's no more VW money?
There may be another round, but it's all stalled, completely stalled, I don't think we've been able to get more information, I know we're trying to connect with Amanda.
Right, can we just confirm that, that she doesn't see anything coming on the horizon?
We can again, but we have, Ian and I have been doing our research on that, and not that we don't see anything on the horizon. I, I truthfully think that, you know, due to all of the shipping issues and everything until the pandemic is over. Um, I, I don't see that, them, them continuing until after. But, uh, I, I'll, I'll continue to research and I'll even, um, get back in touch with Amanda.
And can you just do a back of the envelope, chart, fuel charge, the difference, is it less or more expensive to fuel the? Diesel versus electric with the current price of diesel?
It's certainly cheaper, upfront costs are obviously more, but I can, um, I can get you some. I'm not a hundred percent comfortable giving you exact, but I, I think. Yeah.
A week in the life of, or something like that.
Yeah.
Similar, something like that.
I can get you that, yeah.
Yeah, I think, may, we, we're probably going to delegate that to John or, you know, to do the best he can in a quick pass, just knowing how stretched we are right now with.
Four, so I know he, he knows it in his head.
Yeah, because he does daily, yeah, he lives it, that's why I'm. Yeah, because he does daily. Yeah, he lives it. That's why I'm suggesting.
Good.
I'd like to understand more about the implications, best and worst case both of dialing back on the floor.
Well, Jared and I have talked about this today. You do have a number of buses that are two thousand eight, two thousand nine vintage. And I, I can't stress enough the need to keep a reliable fleet running. Four years ago this time, on a day like today, I was delaying the opening of school because we didn't have buses that would run in the cold. So I just, there's a lot of caution there on getting off track of the replacement cycle that we worked really, you know, hard and purposefully to build. So that's, that's some of my thinking.
Well, we're not talking about conquer, but we kind of are talking transportation. So what would be the implications of cutting to one bus in each district versus two?
I just, we would just have to catch up in a later year to keep our ten year replacement cycle. So each, right now we have it built in approximately two buses per district per year. So if we were to reduce one in each, it would be something that we would look to probably make up next year. If not the year after, but maybe even next year. Or it would be looked at, it might be something that I would come to you all at the end of the year and say, we have potentially surplus funds. But as, as Dr. Hunter said, it's just really important to, to keep the, the fleet as, as current as we can, just due to those issues that she mentioned. And it actually happened in my first year as well. That the, it was so cold like a day today, like today, that buses were, were taking too long to start up and we had to delay school.
But five years ago, the fleet was much more aged. I mean, much, much, much more. So it is good that we caught up.
Yeah.
But and we, you know, we were in a terrible situation where we were storing them in Acton and you know, so they were getting so much more mileage on them than they currently are. So we're in a much better place, having made a huge investment in the depot in Concord and preparing it to charge buses. So I just wanted to sort of not get off the path where, you know, we're, we're getting electric buses for two years. So I think we just should try to do everything we could possibly do to perhaps delay. I've read things where you can retrofit diesel buses. So that might become an option. I just, I think we need to be very creative. And so since we have such a great resource in Brian Folds, I think we just need to work with him and our new sustainability director and really think about this harder because the town signaled to a town meeting many times about their dedication and, you know, commitment to sustainability. So.
Any other thoughts, comments, questions?
Sarah, we have a likely meeting next week, right?
If, yeah, yeah. But you need to see if people are available.
I think this is an important issue that we need to wrestle with as as thoroughly as we can. We may, we may land right back on the superintendent's initial recommendation. But I think we and the administration would do well to really wrestle with it.
Can I just ask a clarifying question here? We're wrestling with this bus issue. Is that what? You know, I'm not sure that we're going to get any more information by next week, certainly. And I think that, you know, from my perspective, you know, I remember days that kids were getting transported off of buses because buses were broken down and that was fairly recent. I know that the replacement schedule has come up and I, I'm comfortable with the replacement schedule. I don't think we're going to have all the answers. I mean, I, I think about even like go to try and buy a car right now. It's very difficult to buy a car. And I just think we're in a really challenging environment right now. And I just, I don't know that we'll have the answers as quickly as we probably want them.
Right. We still need to redo the budget because of the Mecca. I mean, D I direct, so.
I, I think another ten minutes hearing through Jared, what the transportation director would say, were he to have to triage a little differently, were he to see two or three new buses instead of three or four new buses would, would be worth our time. My concern is we're putting diesel on the road for over a decade. Those, were they four, four diesel buses? They're four diesel buses that we're not going to replace for a long period of time. And we are going to see alternatives come our way in, in, in that next decade, I think. So, you know, I, I looked at Jared's two charts and then I looked at my own odometer and I know we've got our own mechanics. I know we've got our own shop right in town. I think we can do a little more diligence on this one myself.
So my question is, so then it in, in not pursuing our regular replacement cycle with the, with the leases to and to it in each region. It would therefore necessitate. Well, it would, it would therefore keep existing buses on the fleet that are set to be sunsetted, if you will, on the road for longer. To, and then to Tracy's point, thereby potentially jeopardizing schedules and whatnot. And, and what would there then be the solution? We would have to purchase electric buses at some determined time in the not too distant future. And we have to grapple with the idea that we may or may not, depending on the law changing, be reimbursed for them. Is that, is that an accurate summary?
I, I don't think we necessarily know when those options are going to be available to us.
If ever, right?
I think the immediate question that John Arena would answer for Jared is if he has four buses, he's going to take off the road. Now he's only taken three off the road. That bus that he's not taking off the road, he's going to run it another fifteen thousand miles. That seems to be our average, like an, like a typical household car. He's got to ask the question, does he have contents?
So we actually
Specific analysis, I think.
Yeah. So we do, we do have the back of the envelope, but it's pretty close savings. So it saves about two K a year in fuel. After the increase in electricity uses factored in. So about two K per electric bus.
So Alexa, my, I'm not, I'm hoping for many more options. I'm hoping that the, the cost of the electric buses begins to come down as they're getting manufactured in much huger quantities. And that from a health perspective, the American Lung Association has come out to say that diesel buses are dangerous to the unfortunately to the people riding and to the people driving them. So it's not just a sustainability, it's, it's a health issue. And it was probably one of the biggest flutters in town. So I, I'm just hoping that maybe next year we have more options and we can maybe have access to electric buses because of a, another federal program, another state program, more funding sources, less expensive electric buses. And maybe it won't be and we'll have to do some catch up with diesel, which would be unfortunate in my opinion. But we're not going to vote the budget tonight because we don't have the final number. We don't have a document to show the public with the final number because we need to make a few tweaks because of the D I director. And we're going to have a more difficult conversation at the Concord Public Schools. So I know it's only a week and we won't have a great deal more information, but we're not going to vote tonight anyway.
Just a quick question. Do we know if the state has anything in the works to purchase? Actually buses, the electric buses, they have an initiative coming down the pipeline to reduce the cost for the districts because that's probably the only way with higher numbers to decrease any cost. From with, speaking to any provider currently, the cost, I'm told that there is not one cost that is going to go down, whether it's for HVAC, your car, for anything because of the pandemic. They are not foreseeing, if the cost will not go up, they're not foreseeing any cost to go down in a, in, in the foreseeable future.
Well, that stinks.
I don't think any of us are experts in this area. So, but we're not going to vote tonight. Because we're, we've just got to make a few tweaks, put aside the whole discussion about the buses, right?
Eric, just quickly, you talked about the, well, and we can talk about it next week, I guess. Just a little bit on maintenance would be good to know.
And that's, and I'll talk more to, more John and more with the mechanics, but since we now have the buses and they're able to have worked on them, they've become experts in, in these electric buses. I know that some districts, I want to say Cambridge was sending their electric bus for us to work on and paying us for them. So I, I think that, I think the maintenance is actually cost minimal, but you know, I, I, I could be wrong because now that first electric bus was always going back to Canada. Let me get back to you on that. But I know that our mechanics have become experts.
That's great because that was a, that was a question is like, do we have to hire somebody new or do, does somebody have to get trained in something or, or where are we?
Can I just ask a very silly, probably silly question when it comes to maintenance? Is that, what's the battery replacement on those electric buses? Because I heard in Teslas, that's like thirty two thousand dollars in four years. Is there, do we know those costs as well?
I can, I can speak to that one. So the costs are really high for a bus because they're much higher capacity, but for us, our routes are so small, we only use a small percentage of the battery every time. So we don't really know how long they're going to last, but it's probably going to last a lot longer than someone that's commuting at Tesla. Driving, you know, fifty to a hundred miles a day because our buses are usually, especially the electric ones, they're not going that far every day. So they're not draining their battery very far.
Could I just ask a clarifying question? Just how, what's the line between this discussion and the budget impact? Is there a proposal of changing numbers or edits? I'm just wanting to be sure we're all linking back to the budget so that the vote next week has that connection already made ahead of it. Is there a proposal to drop the budget number if we don't get all the buses or increase for electric? I'm just looking for a little bit of clarity because I don't, we do need to vote the budget next week.
Given Jared's assurances that if the anticipated revenues fall short, we have other means. I think it's a calculated risk we can take this year. I don't think we take it every year, but this year is quite unusual. It's almost, the, the previous slide he showed us really reminds us that we in effect, prepared for this eventuality. I think.
Well, yes, Dr. Hunter's asking us, are do we have some members who would like to propose that we reduce the bus leases to one bus?
I, I guess I'm not in favor of that because I didn't really see this coming until now. So I, I think I think I need more information. I'm not really sure where it's coming from. So.
So we're sort of, we need to have a final number. I, I completely respect that you don't have enough information
Right.
to vote next week. So we could prepare two budgets, I guess.
Well, I, I guess more my question is, is that I didn't know that the bus lease was up for discussion until tonight. The potential
And honestly, Tracy, to me, I wasn't really aware that there were two buses in the budget. I kind of missed that.
Okay.
Because, and Jared, correct me if I'm wrong, we bought two diesel buses for each district last year, correct?
This current year, correct? Yeah.
Yeah, FY twenty two.
Yes, I believe we did.
Is Ian, that what we did? Ian does all the, the transportation?
Yeah, there's two in the budget this year.
Two, no, what did we do for FY twenty two? We leased?
Yeah, it's leasing.
Yeah. So these are for leases. We bought, what we did is FY twenty one, we bought an electric at the, at the region. But we've been leasing, we've been leasing the diesel.
Right. So this would be two fiscal years with no electric buses. And that to me doesn't really show our commitment. And I completely respect Tracy that you didn't have this information. So I'm just trying to figure out what to do. We could prepare two budgets. One with two buses and one with one.
I just want to be sure you know that it's a thirty two thousand dollar difference because the lease, that's the cost of a lease per bus.
It's not the money.
I think so. No, I understand, but the, the timeliness of the money is what I'm worried about. So I, I don't know that I'm trying to see if I can separate out the two processes so you can have time to discuss buses while you still settle a budget next week. And maybe you don't need to decide this and still vote a budget is what I'm wondering.
So vote a budget, but sort of know that that may be, that the bus issue may be something that comes down going, because we can always come down.
You can always
But I just, I'll have to make a clear statement that I am not supporting two buses. So I have to think about it, to be honest.
So just a point of clarification, just a point of clarification, just so I know what the task is. Right now, we gave four suggestions to get to guideline. Are you not, are you recommending that we, in addition to do these four suggestions, even reduce it to under guideline by the thirty two, thirty three thousand? Or my recommendation is to, if we reduce the, one of the buses, I would probably take that off the circuit breaker offset and from sixty three thousand, reduce that to thirty one thousand. Or do you want me to bring a budget that is going to be under the guideline?
I'm going to answer as the superintendent and say, I don't think you should be cutting two buses right now. So I, I'm not bringing you that recommendation. You can alter it at the vote if you'd like. I think you need to give yourselves more time. I think that's my bottom line piece. Leave the two buses in, in the budget, knowing you're going to have months ahead of you to keep talking about this. You can lower the number before town meeting.
I'll just speak for myself. I think we need, I know it's a terrible time with COVID and but I just think we, we need to have a better plan to electrify the fleet. And that's not going to be next week.
I think that's another discussion to
But we need
Put on a separate agenda and figure out how that is going to happen, if it can happen.
Well, it's small steps, so, but. Okay.
All right. I think, so Jared, I, I think we're okay to, I know what they tell you to bring in, and they can talk on it next week.
Wonderful.
All right. On to the capital plan.
Yep. Right. So really you're revisiting what you've already discussed here, similar with the debate of deciding if you're going to put a warrant article forward. We need to make that decision in the next really next, tonight or next week. Jared, did we have any updated information? This is all what they had in December.
Yeah, this is what they have. Yeah, they're, they are working on the roadway grade. We're working with Alan on that. But this, these numbers are, what we brought to you on the seventeenth have not changed. There's two options. We are looking into for granted, if it can be reusable. Russ is on tonight and I think he can, he can speak to that. He was on.
Was on, yeah.
He will be back.
Jared, I don't think we need to know. I mean, it's will be good. If it brings the price down, great. If it doesn't, so be it. It just, you know.
Yeah.
And maybe that some pieces they don't know until, you know, until they're doing it, but.
And so I don't, every time we've had the discussion about Ripley, our regional members have not been present because it's been a Concord discussion. But I don't, I do think we have to figure out a way to figure out what Carlos piece of the Ripley.
So I had a meeting scheduled with Tim Goddard and Carrie LaFleur on the snow day. That is now, it's bumping into next week because our schedules are so full, but they're both very happy to sit at the table with us and talk through how that Ripley, in, you know, those Ripley improvements might be managed, which I think is where it sits. I'm not sure you, we don't really have a mechanism. Jared and I have talked a lot about this. We don't really have a mechanism. But I think the town leadership looks like they're very interested and willing to be part of the conversation.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
So for Sarah and for Sarah and Evette, to that point, the capital plan for Concord has some paving at Ripley to do some upgrades there and flooring at Ripley next year. And Carlisle might be interested, might be part of a small piece of that cost, which I think is like a tenth of a, I don't know, it breaks down to a really small amount of money, but. So, but that isn't your regional plan? That's a
No, no, I just wanted.
Yeah.
When we discuss it.
I'm glad you brought it up while they were here because we keep doing that where they're not here.
Good, thank you.
All right. So they're figuring out mechanics of how that would be brought forth as a, to, to the Carlisle because it's not.
It's so little money that like we're talking on your $2,000, maybe 10. Yeah. Yeah.
They'll figure it out. Okay.
I think probably they'll figure it out.
That, that's a 60, 40 split, right? Then it's Carlos portion, right?
But it'll be Carlisle's portion of the regional portion of the.
Be more like eight to 10%, maybe less.
So it's a quarter of the 40%.
Right.
All right.
So back to the road.
Granted, back to.
Yeah, back to the road.
I, I support the article. I want this high school complete before we start thinking about a middle school.
I completely agree with you, Court.
So I hope we get a bad grade.
Yeah, just so everyone knows what we're talking about. The other day on the, on town meeting preview, the DPW director in Concord had these great slides of how they can rate different roads. And it was very effective to show if you wait so long, it costs you more to fix it, which sounds obvious, but he had some really great backup data to go with it. So we've asked him to place the BD road or whatever, loop road, whatever we're calling it on the, on the scale.
I hope it's a D or F.
Yeah, I don't think that's going to be a stretch, but we'll see.
We'll see.
Okay. So if we have no more questions or comments on that, I think we can then move to our action items. Action item A, the vote to approve, the, the budget will defer the vote to approve, but I, we can vote on the capital plan right now. Okay. So is there a motion?
Do we have language, Sarah? We want to get this one right because this is a dead authorization.
Right. So my suggestion, let us bring you the warrant language article for next week.
Okay.
We'll do everything. We meant to do that and go through the crack. But we'll bring you that.
All right. So we'll go to the donation from Looters Environmental.
I can just talk on that quickly. This is one of our vendors who regularly, Ian, will donate a small amount, maybe annually.
Yeah, it's annually.
Yeah. So we're appreciative, of course.
And I say every year, there's no goods or services related to this, that their contract is their contract and their donation is their donation. And we've examined that and we've been comfortable with it in previous years. Are, as Dr. Hunter says, grateful for their their beneficence.
Correct.
All right. I'll make a motion that the Concord Carlos School Committee votes to accept a $125 donation from Looters Environmental, Inc.
Discussion?
Thank you very much.
Many thanks.
Anderson, I for both.
Who's I for both?
Marana, why for both?
Mustafi, I for region.
Randy, I for both.
And Wilson for region. Thank you. And we have another donation now to the CEF donation to the Sharon Young Scholarship Fund.
So this is money CEF had actually designated a couple of years ago and the check is just getting to us. And that's the explanation. The Sharon Young Scholarship Fund is a fund that was created to allow for subsidies of travel for kids who needed it. I'm having, you know, flashbacks to all our travel conversations. The fund stills there. There is other monies in it. This, um, this would be part of that. And when we can finally travel again, we'll certainly revisit it.
And the scholarship fund is at the region. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So it's just a regional vote?
The regional vote, Sharon Young, those of you who don't know, is principal at Alcott with a really generous, caring human heart that served all kids well and inspired, inspired the creation of the fund because of the kids it continue, you know, it's going to serve at the high school.
Thank you, CEF.
Yeah.
All right.
All right. And Tracy?
I need to abstain from this vote because I was part of the creation of the fund.
All right. So is there a motion?
Sure. I move that the Concord Carlos School Committee votes to accept a $5,000 CEF donation to the Sharon Young Scholarship Fund.
Second. Rule, discussion.
And we just note that this is an equity contribution in a very real sense.
Yeah. Nice.
Can I also just note that the last meeting that happened at the high school was to review the fund before the shutdown in March and how we were going to raise more money, which seems comical now, but it is really all about equity and it's about providing the opportunity for kids that wouldn't have this opportunity otherwise.
Right.
All right. Ported Anderson, I.
Who's I?
Marana, abstain.
Mustafi, I for region. Thank you.
Randy, I?
Wilson, I for region. Thank you. And with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn the.
Sarah?
Yes.
You, you've got one more public comment in your agenda.
I do have one more public comment. Okay. So we'll go back to public comment. If anyone has a comment to make at this time, please raise your hand or make yourself known. Seeing none, then I will accept a motion to adjourn the Concord Carolina Regional School Committee meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Anderson, I.
Who's I?
Marana, why?
Mustafi, I.
And Randy, I?
Wilson, I. Good night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Concord will stay in session.
Yes, we will.
Good night.
Right. So our first agenda item is the CMS building project update discussion. Because we're meeting on the 18th, we will have one more meeting before town meeting. And we will, the town moderator is trying to keep a very tight meeting. I'll say that. And so I, we will have the opportunity to make a very short statement. So I'll just leave that there. We have not crafted anything yet. And I don't believe it will be lengthy by any means. Is there any more discussion around that? And we'll let our liaisons tell us if there's been any activity at the building committee level.
Well, I think Alexa can speak to a very robust schedule of outreach gatherings, which we've been getting good feedback on. If you want to go there, Alexa.
Sure.
I'd like to come back to your, your reference to what we bring to the special town meeting after that, Cynthia.
Yep.
Yeah, no, from a communication standpoint, we are in the absolute last throes of our outreach. I'm happy to report, you know, we weren't sure if people were going to come this late in the game, especially given that the finance committee in particular has thrown their support behind the project and the warrant amount. But they keep coming. Not the numbers that we were experiencing early in the fall, but there are, there are bodies on these Zooms live and kicking. So that's nice to see. We have two more, one tomorrow, one Thursday. And then we're calling it the Last Chance Coffee next Wednesday, the day before town meeting, in case there are stragglers. We are also in the process of sharing as much as we can on social media at this point, just trying to remind people of the town meeting and, and the vote itself. And then I think it will be appropriate after that to remind people of the February third vote. And again, everybody is very appreciative of the outreach and the transparency. So I think we're in, I think we're in good shape there.
I got my, my next committee report there.
Yeah, I got mine as well. I think we'll need to remind people at every public opportunity we have that some precinct lines have changed. And people aren't going to necessarily go to where they've been voting for many years.
Yeah.
Will be a good test of the system. That's for sure.
Yeah. I'm not sure how I want to approach this and certainly don't know how the committee wants to approach this, if at all. I fully expect us to vote affirmative action. I don't think that's too debatable. We've been supporting this long, long before anybody else. You know, goes back a number of years now. I am not comfortable with the continued uncertainty about our efforts to be net zero. Net zero is a far cry from net zero ready. And I'm hopeful that we'll learn something tomorrow at the light plant board meeting. But I don't know if we'll have anything more than speculation about what might or might not happen, not, not when or how. And that concerns me for a lot of reasons. One, because I think Concord has necessary sustainability goals. And number two, because we want the most sustainable school that we can get. We haven't cut any corners on education, to say the least. In terms of how we've designed this, I would hope we don't cut corners on sustainability. So we're going to need some commitments. I also think it's wise to make certain that the public knows that we didn't really finish value engineering because we didn't finish our homework. The town has as much as $800,000 hanging in the balance in terms of where soil goes around town. Has over $100,000 hanging on testing water pressure at the site. And has a possible greater chunk of saving. Now, there's been some 221,000 thus far for acoustical fencing that requires evaluation of the noise making capacity of the units. And this, therefore, the design of acoustical fencing on the roof. All of these add up to a potential million dollars and I think it's important the school committee and the town keeps that on their radar, that we've got some necessary homework.
Thank you, Court. So I have similar concerns about the solar or we just don't know. And again, we'll tune in in a few hours to the light board meeting at 7:30. And see if we could get a little more information. I doubt we'll get a lot more information before town meeting, but I think we don't want to burden a future potential school committee with having to deal with this because we didn't get, get things going. So I, I, I'm going to be optimistic and hope that, you know, we can start to work together with the light board and the light plant and get some traction on this.
Cynthia, what do you explicitly sort of see our role in that being? Other than encouragement and support?
It's a Concord Public School. It's not part, it's not, you know, a town building. It's a school building. So, and we do want to have solar in some capacity there to support our investment and having it be net zero ready, right?
Yep.
So I think it's in, it's not the building committee's job. So the next obvious person to work with the life plant on this would be the school committee and the administration.
You mean like to hustle them along, so to speak?
Well, yeah. Right.
I, I was just, I'm just, again, we had talked earlier about expertise, like I just, I was literally being like, what would be our role?
Right. And it's, it's complicated, right? Because the light plant's an enterprise for a good reason. So their objectives and goals are similar, but how they achievement, how they achieve them financially are different. So we just want to try to get an understanding as to how we're all going to do this. Whether it be, you know, concurrent, you know, or got to finish the school and do this after, we just kind of want to know what the plan is. That's all.
We, we do know that there is enough sincerity about this, that the town has spent some sum of money on external consultants.
Right.
So one, that says there's a commitment, but two, it actually adds to our confusion because the sketches that we saw would generate far in excess of the school's needs. So it's quite unclear to me where, where the light plant might want to go on this, what they need for their, their return on investment. And how they would achieve managing the expenditures and how they would time this. I'll, I'll repeat what I said at the outset. I, I don't want to be working on this in five years.
Yeah. We, we. I was just talking more in a literal sense of what we would literally do apart from championing it. Is there like, like we can't provide oversight onto a different town, like I, I, just again, I just, so that I'm prepared for what I may be at, like what the lift might be other than being a champion for it. Is there anything like literally nuts and bolts that we can do?
Well, I think we have to enter into some kind of agreement as we get closer to this becoming a reality.
So agreement that would detail like what?
What, how much solar? It's, it's all the financial pieces, right?
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Got it.
How much we'll pay.
But that's one, okay, got it. Okay.
This, this stuff is really complicated. That's all I know.
And I know less than you apparently, so.
So, you know, it's just sort of like, we're not just like a bystander or, you know, you sort of have to be, I think, an active participant in a good way to just define our roles and responsibilities. That's all. So. We're just, it's just beginning. So I think, you know. So.
I'll answer the question my way, just my personal belief. And that is, our declaration of support for this could also include our declaration that we that we are eager and expectant around solar generation on the site. And we don't want momentum lost.
Right.
You know, the farther this gets away from the building committee, the farther this gets away from the, the construction, the more there are opportunities for logistical disconnects. You know, think about, think about renovating piecemeal or doing something at initial construction. They're fundamentally different. Even, even though we are of a mind that this is going to be solar ready on the rooftop. Beyond that, we don't know, although Light Plant has consultant designs for generation beyond sixty-five percent the building need rooftop capacity. There's a lot, lot to be worked out. And as Cynthia says, probably it's an understatement, it is complex. And the light plant would work with a number of subs and intermediaries, even financing intermediaries, I think.
I think you're right. All right. So Court, just as a, by are you suggesting anything specific for language at town meeting or?
Well, yeah, that's, I, I think, I, I think that the town needs to hear that the, the vote we're looking for doesn't include solar, but don't worry, the project will. I want to bring that confidence to the town.
I guess, I guess, you know, from my perspective, it's just a town meeting. We're going to bring this project forward and we're going to support it in the affirmative. I'm a little bit concerned that once we get into all the weeds of all of this, that that gives the appearance that we're not in support of it when we are in support of it. So I just think we have to be really careful about you know, where we're going to the town with this. And then at the next point, I mean, this is a work in progress. This, nothing has even happened yet, right? And so I think we obviously support solar and we support all the initiatives, but there are a lot of questions out there. And I just would hate for that to get muddled into a lot of discussion around the vote.
I'm not imagining a lot of discussion. What I'm imagining is coming clean with the, the knowledge that we know the building isn't quite complete.
Right, but that can be interpreted as we need more money, which is, right.
We do, the rate, we do. We do.
Whether it's the, you know, electric ratepayers or, you know, the capital article down the line, I don't know.
I, I, I think it's.
Just don't want to make the mistake of, of, you know, what we did with the bus depot, which was.
It doesn't, yeah, it doesn't make our support conditional.
No, no, no.
It makes our support accurate, to my mind. That's just one opinion.
Yeah.
It's, and you, you could go the opposite way, Tracy, that it could be interpreted as a, don't worry, we know.
Right.
As long as that's articulated with clarity, I think that that's okay. Yeah.
And, and that this school committee is keen on it, as doubtless is the building committee, or they wouldn't have made it net zero already. You know, I mean, everybody's in favor of it. So we're not really introducing anything new. And to Alexa's point, you know, we're not trying to hold the project hostage to this. What we're saying is we know there's going to be another chapter.
So we're being transparent in our process moving forward, is what we're looking for. Just clarity and being transparent in the process.
Yes, absolutely.
Whatever confidence we have, we want the town to have.
Sure. And I think, again, can we all examine that language? Because I think to Tracy's point, or I'm interpreting Tracy's point, but my interpretation of Tracy's point is stakeholders who are keenly invested in sustainability initiatives are well versed in all of this nuance, at least I think, given, you know, as, as in, even in my limited role as communications co-chair, it's a, it's an actively engaged group. They, it, it appears to me that the different various groups in town and their memberships are, are very clear on the timeline, the narrative and all these specifics. Who, people who are less invested in the sustainability initiatives and more invested in the educational aspect of it are probably less aware of these nuances and details. And I just, maybe Tracy was trying to say this, but what, we just need to make sure that we really nail the language so that it does not confuse people. Again, because I do think that you'll have people at town meeting who are, you know, le- lower information voters. I don't know if that's a nice way to put it. But so again, I just think as long as the language is very succinct and clear and is not, and does not have the effect of confusing people, I think that's fine.
And hopefully the light board will make this easier for us tomorrow than it would be where we do it today.
So, so Court, after.
Even better.
So after tomorrow's meeting, it, it could be nothing, it could be something, we'll find out. Could you perhaps put together some wording to be part of a statement?
Yeah, I'll, I'll put something together that can, I hope, reflect what I'm hearing from the four of us. Yeah. Yeah, I know, you know, I, I hear Tracy's concern that, you know, stuff can get misinterpreted, you know, that we, that advocacy for completion of the school with solar could make our support look conditional. And that would be a disaster.
Right, we don't.
It can't be conditioned because we can't, we can't hold the light board and enterprise fund to our wishes. All we can do is reflect our hope that this is going to be a streamlined process.
Yep. But I definitely, the sentiment that, you know, we don't, we're not pointing out something the building committee forgot or ignored or wasn't willing to invest. And that's not what we're saying here. We're saying that we just want to be clear that we do want solar and we're going to work with the light plant to get to that. But I'm sure Court can word Smith something that's clear and not with an opinion.
Well, and you know, back, back to Tracy, your point, I think. We don't dictate any other boards. And if it was, if it was interpreted that way, that's kind of antagonistic and inappropriate on our part. So I'll, I'll try to be very mindful of that.
Yep.
Yeah, that would be great. If we could see that and just have another discussion about that at our next meeting.
Yep.
And then we'll see where it goes. Yeah.
Thank you very much. Okay. So we're on to the budget.
All right. I'm happy to open it up a bit, just to remind you where we left off.
Absolutely.
So we've brought you a recommended budget, which Jared's got the number there. The finance committee has voted their guideline. The guidelines stayed the same as the preliminary guideline. So we do have a current delta of forty-six, eight, forty-eight, which with the little bit of the moving pieces we've talked on tonight might actually go up a little. We did some work up prior to the December meeting to see what we could recommend. So we were holding to these recommendations with the $90,000 reduction from the Mecca supplemental sped grant. And then some bit of risk taking with circuit breaker to offset with 75,000. So that would close the delta to the three twenty-one, eight, forty-eight that you see there. And so that's where we are tonight. We have a little longer. The conquered warrant closes February, first week in February. So you actually have both the eighteenth and the twenty-fifth for discussion.
Lori, not that it's an hour bucket, but Jared, have you talked to Carrie LaFleur? What is her chapter seventy number? I know it's not going to help us, but is it going to help her?
The one that she puts in is probably very conservative lower than what, it's probably, I gotta check it out. It, it's probably a little bit lower right now than what the governor is going to come out with, and they might adjust it. I, I'll take a look. Usually we're, we're both, since there are budgets to do before the governor's budget comes out, it's, we're both very conservative. We, we do that on purpose, both of us.
And I'm just seeing a lot of chatter that there's just a lot of money at the state level. So we'll also hope that's true for the region. But yeah, that can't help us, so.
But I guess my question is this. So it seems like we've offered, what is it, $165,000 off the top here in ways that you guys feel comfortable with, right? My assumption is this is sort of in a, like, we've offered something in good faith. And I know that the finance committee keeps a different kind of schedule than we do. But, you know, is, is, should our expectation be that they would in good faith come, come back to us? I'm concerned that they had their preliminary guideline and, and sort of stuck with it. Because that would seem to be, to me, in any negotiation, sort of the next step.
It is. Yeah, the town's getting some bad news financially. Their free cash is way off. So I'm not as optimistic about this negotiation. So, and the other thing is the town put their needs aside for a couple of years, especially the roads. So they're playing catch up. So they're asking, you know, to do that. And if you've driven around Concord last couple of days, yeah, you're not, got some problems. So, and I just don't know if the local receipts will continue in this downward trend. I, I think with Omicron, I think we're not going to finish out. The, the numbers could be this good, even though we were pretty healthy through the, you know, FYI, but I don't know. So I'm concerned that's going to be a big factor here. And it impacts all of us, right? Receipts are down. It's, it's, you know, taxpayer and mostly property tax, but there is the receipt thing, which is the cherry. So I don't know. They've not met since we've, you know, they set their guideline and then we begun this process. So we'll have to see.
Yeah.
So, and I guess, you know, I, I am new to the budget season, but I, I do feel it's our duty and a responsibility to advocate for the students of this district because we are their only advocates. And while I understand there's a guideline, I, I mean, I think this is the time that our kids need us more than ever. And whether we're talking about academics, mental health, student achievement, all of that rolls into what's happening right now. And I think that, I guess I would ask Lori and Jared, is there anything else that you could find in the budget at this point that you would recommend? Or is, is this kind of where you're netting out?
This is, this is where we're netting out right now. We did go back through, we took some risks already in staffing with some projected retirements that we don't have in hand yet. I think they're safe risks, but I'm not comfortable going farther. There's a risk here with the circuit breaker offset with special ed. We've already trimmed supplies and materials. So we're, it's a, it's tight. It's a tight budget. We don't, I don't have another spot right now to recommend, not at least on January 11. Can I ask a quick question? And I should know this, so pardon me. Has the finance committee seen our 165,000? Okay, so.
They've seen it. They have not met us.
Eighty years, yeah. Right. Yeah, okay. So to, to, again, I'll go back to, you know, I, I think about buying a home. Somebody lists the price, you put in your offer, and then the next step would be the seller, let's call the finance committee seller, wouldn't they come and counter? And I, and I know Cynthia, you said you're not optimistic, but, you know.
I think we need to give the process a few months, you know, the governor's budget, which is a factor in all this. Especially, it's more at the region, but for the town is a factor. Get a better, you know, look at what the financial outlook is. So I think it's going to be a process. So I don't think any, any entity should dig in and say, you know, we're done and, you know.
Got it.
We, we can go.
Get off with our 165. Is that sort of where, what I'm understanding?
Well, the superintendent has said that that's right now her position. And as we said, as a region, we can always go down.
Yeah.
And the finance committee can always come up. So you know, we're just, I think we have to kind of see how things go. You know, we don't have a lot of revenue. So, but again, as I said, the town will have revenue from the government state. And we'll just have to watch the local receipts.
The 165 is exclusively a revenue recalculation. Am I correct? So it could be said that we haven't found any, any additional efficiencies within our budget. What we have done is recalculated revenues as, as better offsets than before. A question that'll come up again, I think we should ask now. I think there are eight new FTEs here. Most of them are not teachers. I think these are all program driven, student need driven, not enrollment change driven. Are we projecting static enrollment for next year as compared to this?
We're watching it carefully right now. Kindergarten being the wild card that we're just beginning to register. It can, it could be that we're going to be able, we're going to be down another section or two. We've taken some gambles there and budgeted based on what we know. So we've already trimmed one elementary section, expecting enrollments will be down enough that we can do that. So there's another risk we've already taken that it, you know, last year we did have to add back in the summer and use contingency to do that. So we, we already, we have already looked at that. I wouldn't go any deeper.
And the Mecca grant is just a one time this year.
Yep.
So those, yeah, those could come back into the budget next year.
And same with, just so, just a point of clarity, the circuit breaker offset is not technically additional revenue. What we would do is we would, so say I'm projecting 800,000, I'm increasing that to say 875,000, just using those numbers, when I don't believe that we're going to be getting 800,000, but we're going to have carryover that we would dip into. So this would, we would have to potentially make this up, but it doesn't have to meet up in one year.
So we either have new money or carryover money.
Correct.
In any event, we can pull it out of the appropriation request.
We did this three years ago, if you remember, to build the special ed programs. We contemplated carryover to, to, for new hires and it worked out great. And we were able to make it up in a few years.
Yeah. So Jared, if you could send out a new slide just reflecting this current state of affairs with the DEI sixty percent in, and then just so the finance committee has this.
Sure.
I don't know when they meet again. I'll have to go look. I think it's this, I don't think they meet this week. And they wouldn't meet. Maybe it's going to be after town meeting.
Now, just as an FYI, my link in the agenda takes us to the hundred level spreadsheet, not the slides.
Yep. Yep. That's what I'm saying, I think we need to redo them, redo the Concord slide and send it around.
And that could be the full line item budget. Not the one hundred level, that one hundred level is the, that's the first segment, but that is the full budget that is late. Yeah, the slides are not late.
Right, okay, thank you, yeah, as, as granular as we typically see.
We'll tweak the slides and get them to you for discussion next week, and as information to the finance committee chairs.
Yeah.
And if we could look at the, the options that you did debate and didn't bring forward, that'd be helpful.
Yeah, I can write them down, I think we named the big buckets of, you know, staffing, which is always retirements and enrollments. Special ed, which is always tuition and services. And then supplies and materials, there's not a lot of other pockets to go to in the CPS budget, so.
And also if you could redo the regional slide with the change in the DEI salary. A little. So tonight, so we have two more meetings before we, before our deadline.
Right.
Do I, do we meet next week? I don't, I gotta get my look at my calendar.
Yes, we're trying to add one for next week.
Okay, so we, it's
We're kind of a save the date placeholder, if you can make a date. I thought I saw that on email.
Okay, I just forgot, okay.
There, just send it up, yeah.
Next week.
Yes. And I'm gonna say definitely over Zoom.
Okay.
Busy week, yes, indeed. Okay. Any more discussion on the budget?
No, I, I'm thankful we have two more meetings to work on.
Yeah. Okay, I will entertain a motion to adjourn unless there's any more business.
No move.
Great, I'll second that.
Okay.
I'll vote Anderson, I.
Who's I?
Marano, I.
And Rainey, I. Thank you all, thank you Lori, thank you Jared, sorry it's a late night.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Bye, good night.